All right, I'd like to welcome everyone as we call our January 9th, 2018 meeting to order. Thank you, Sheriff. And I'd like to welcome everyone again, and we've got a really good turnout tonight. I like to see that. That's one of the great things about small government is we're really open and we enjoy seeing your faces, we love hearing your opinions, and it always helps us make better decisions. For those of y'all that do not know, I'm a University of Georgia graduate, so I'm a little black and blue after last night. Y'all take it easy on me during the comment period. With that being said, I will move on and get started with our agenda announcement. I think item 2A has been removed from the agenda, the presentation of the Division of Aid and Adult Services Award. Are we having a replacement, correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. We have, glad to have Mr. Patrick McConnell here with us tonight representing the veterans in Macon County. And at this time, we didn't put this on the agenda because the whole time Patrick said, "Now, we're gonna try to, this is gonna try to be a surprise." So we have a nice surprise tonight that's gonna be presented to one of our departments that provides an excellent service to the group of citizens in Macon County that have provided the ultimate in public service, our Veterans and Veterans Administration Department. So with that being said, and no further ado, Mr. McConnell, if you'll come up here, I think you've got a little something you'd like to present.
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much for letting us do this. Last of my friends, well, the last time I was room like this, I faced a judge. But I warned my kids. We have been watching the Veterans Administration Office real closely here for a while. And I'm gonna tell you, I would put the veteran service officers of Macon County up against any in North Carolina. They are good. When you go in and talk to them, it's a little different. They've gotta have medical knowledge, a whole bunch of legal knowledge to come back, and they can't be afraid to get dirty. Our veteran service officers do that, and they don't take no for an answer. We go to the BA, and they come back and say, "This guy don't qualify." Our veteran service officers say, "Wait a minute, we're going back to them and say, 'Right.'" We go back in, and as I'm out during the day doing my duties, I have veterans come up to me all the time and say, "You know, thank you for referring us to the Veterans Administration Office." With that said, keep it short and sweet. If Lee and Christie would come up, we just have a little token of appreciation from the veterans of Macon County. They're just, they're fantastic. There is no better. I know this isn't much, but it's a token of our appreciation for us. And just keep it up, and I'm gonna keep an eye on you.
I gotta go to American Legion, so we're not supposed to leave one for you.
Say that's to get any kind of recognition from veterans. That's more handholding than anything. Thank you. We love our dogs, so thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Very well done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I failed to mention, as I opened our meeting, just a couple of rules of procedure for us, and after we finished that, made me think of it. If any of you need to get up and leave after your point of our agenda, please feel free to quietly do so. If you'd like to stay for the whole two or three hours that we're gonna be here, we'd love to, you're welcome to. I know those chairs a little uncomfortable out there, so if you could also please silence your cell phones, we appreciate that. With that, we'll keep right on checking. Let's all rise, so we'll absorb a moment of silence, and I'll ask you to go ahead and leave us in a place where we can.
The salute flag.
American Legion. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, the Lord Nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next on our agenda is a public hearing to discuss the Macon County ground erosion and sedimentation control ordinance. I presume that's what the majority of you are here for, based upon the quantity of people that have signed up to speak for it. As I mentioned when I opened, one of the great things about small government is it's easy to take in from the citizens of our county, and we appreciate that. And I can assure each and every one of you that we hear you, we listen to you, and we take your thoughts into consideration. Again, this will be a somewhat of a public meeting, so you're gonna have the opportunity to speak. Go ahead and open the meeting. I ask that you'll please, while you're speaking, please note civil discourse and respect for your fellow speakers, whether you agree with them or not. I hear their opinions out, and again, they'll appreciate your respect as they will give to you. There is a three-minute time limit on your speaking time, and we'll let that fudge a little bit, but try, and I'll raise my hand and let you know when you're getting close to your talent here. Again, we have several people to speak tonight, and we also have a lot of other county businesses before the board. We're not here to criticize each other. We're here to respectfully discuss our opinions and how we might move forward with an ordinance in Macon County. I'd also like to, I'll go ahead and I'm gonna let Derek, we're all on our county manager, open this up, and I've had a couple of other comments before we get started. So Derek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board, thank you. And as the chairman said, you know, that's one of the benefits of small government, is being able to interact and hear the people, which is exactly what's gonna occur tonight. And again, one of the very fortunate benefits, I think, we have living in Macon County. What I want to do, before we start the public hearing very briefly, is go through the timeline that has led up to where we are here tonight with respect to the proposed amendment. And also, I would like to go over a little, kind of a where we're headed in the future after this public hearing, kind of some next steps for consideration to the board. And lastly, I would like to provide a few comments that I hope can clear up. I have received a few comments prior to the meeting, and I feel like that with some research and discussion that I've had with the county attorney as well as Jack Morgan, our Director of Planning, Permitting, and Development, hope to answer, hopefully, or help answer some of those questions that I've received prior to the meeting. So just to start with the timeline, on February 14th, if you'll recall, that was right after our budget work session last year. Commissioner Higdon had brought up during the budget work session that we would like to evaluate the grading license program in Macon County. The grading license program was originally started in 2008, and it was, it was made possible through the unanimous vote of the Board of Commissioners at that time. So with the motion by Commissioner Beal, we suspended the current grading license program that was in effect and passed it along to the planning board so that they could discuss it, look through it, and evaluate it, as directed by the Board of Commissioners. Then, in looking back through the minutes, Chairman Tate commented on the importance of the vetting process when reviewing this program that has been in place, and that's exactly what we're doing here tonight, a continuance of that vetting process. When you move to May 16th, the Board of Commissioners voted unanimously for the planning board to take the grading license, the grading contractor's license program through a process with some public input, and that's, again, quotes from further direction of the liaison, Mr. Carl Gillespie and Jack Morgan, the Director of Planning, Permitting, and Development. Now, when it was passed to the planning board, the, their evaluation of this program that was in effect included months of discussions, not only on the licensure program, but the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance in its entirety. I know Chester Jones, our legal counsel, worked with the planning board as they went through, looking at this program, and then moving forward with their recommendations. In addition to the planning board meetings, the planning board held a public input or question and answer session on June 15th, which all licensed grading contractors that currently held a Macon County grading contractor's license were, received a letter, an invite to this public input session. It was also posted in the courthouse. Moving on to July of 2017, the board voted to inform, the planning board voted at their meeting to inform the Macon County Board of Commissioners of their approval to continue the Macon County grading license program by adding the recommendations that they would propose into the existing sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. And at that time, Mr. Jack Morgan presented those recommendations to the board. There were nine of these recommendations, including the recommendation to move this program from out on its own to under the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. On August 8th, Jack Morgan presented the, again, we discussed the recommendation of the planning board to the Macon County Board of Commissioners, and following this presentation, a discussion was held in which county attorney Chester Jones asked the board to consider this draft a new small portion of Section 153, which is the county's sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. We were advised at that time that we also needed to review this material in light of the full ordinance, which contains important definitions. And again, so there, the planning board voted to send it to the board on July 27th. Jack Morgan presented their recommendations to this board on August 8th. December 12th of 2017, we continued our discussion on licensure requirements and the incorporation of the same into the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. The, Jack Morgan again spoke with us. We heard a few comments at that meeting concerning this topic, and the Board of Commissioners voted four to one to approve holding the public hearing at the January meeting. So here we are tonight. This public hearing is the first opportunity that this board has had to discuss publicly the revised sedimentation and erosion control ordinance in its entirety, as this will be the first time that this board has discussed, when I say it's in entirety, this will be the first time the board's had an opportunity to discuss it with the amendment included. Until now, when Jack had presented it, it was into a list of bullet points. Since then, Chester has went through and incorporated those bullet points and actually put it in the ordinance. So this is the first, we're seeing it, giving the public a chance to comment on it tonight. During Chester's additional research, and he'll speak to this later, would like to, he found some things as he was going through that, some technical changes that need to be made prior to doing anything with the document. I think that we had all, we were looking into and all aware of the fact that we were gonna have to check, this is a state modeled ordinance. The sedimentation and erosion control ordinance, again, which we're simply putting the amendment into that ordinance, is a state modeled ordinance. Thus, it will have to be approved by the state of North Carolina, and we'll have to receive confirmation of that from them prior to being able to have a vote of adoption. So again, before that state review, we cannot have a vote to adopt this ordinance. The public hearing, it's intended to accomplish exactly what it says. It's an opportunity for the public to be heard. And the planning board, through its exercises and its meetings, of course, all meetings are open to the public, they've spoken with the grading contractors, and they've had their public input session on these recommendations. Now, it's time for the Board of Commissioners to hold their public input session and hear the public's thoughts and comments on this proposed amendment to the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. Following the public hearing tonight, we'll evaluate all the comments that we receive in light of the amendment that's being proposed. We'll evaluate those public comments, as well as comments from Jack, if he gives testimony as the Director of Planning, Permitting, Development, any planning board member that's here and would like to speak. Take all these comments, as well as legal counsel's comments and the Board of Commissioners, and take them back and evaluate them. Upon completion of this evaluation and the decision whether or not to incorporate changes to what we have now, we will, we will then send it to the state of North Carolina. So before we send that, again, that's gotta be approved by the state, any change we make, because it's that state modeled ordinance, we're going to take the comments we receive here tonight from everyone in the room, evaluate those changes in light of this amendment prior to sending that document onto the state of North Carolina. And I realize it's a long drawn-out process, and y'all are probably getting tired of hearing me talk already, but it's a valuable process that ensures everybody gets an opportunity to be heard. And I think, you know, that rings true, as I was looking back, and I mentioned earlier, I was citing the importance of the vetting process. We need a process with public input. Those are all quotations because they came directly from members of the Board of County Commissioners. And again, I think that we have to remember this is a process, and this is where we're at in that process, is something that this Board of Commissioners has never taken lightly, and that is an opportunity to hear what the public has to say. Similarly, it's an opportunity for us to share the facts with the public of what is being proposed. And again, I have received some correspondence following our last meeting that seem to suggest that this is a new ordinance, or that the fundamental purpose of this ordinance, the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance, that its fundamental purpose has been changed in its entirety. I've received emails that, you know, that range from the question of, "Well, I can't move a, I can't put a swing set up on my property if this passes." I think, I've heard comments, I think we had one at the last meeting, "Can't put a shovel in the ground on my own property if this amendment passes." And I think going, in taking those comments and looking at them, it's important that we go back to that August 8th meeting, and Chester had mentioned, asked the board to consider this draft a new small portion of Section 153 of the county's Code of Ordinances. He advised the commissioners that they needed to review this new material in light of the full ordinance that contains important definitions. And so, while we look at these questions and go back to the definitions of the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance, the first page of that ordinance, Section 15302, the purpose of this state modeled ordinance, as you will find, is to regulate land disturbing activity in Macon County. That is the purpose of the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. Now, what is a land disturbing activity? And I'm reading right out of the ordinance's definitions. A land disturbing activity is any use of the land by any person in residential, industrial, educational, institutional, or commercial development, highway and road construction, and maintenance that results in a change of natural cover or topography that may cause or contribute to sedimentation. So you gotta change the natural cover of the topography, and you have to contribute, the activity you're performing has to contribute to sedimentation. It's gotta meet, it's gotta meet to that two-part test.
Does the definition may contribute?
So, the definition of sedimentation means the process by which sediment resulting from accelerated erosion has or is being transported off the site of the land disturbing activity or into a lake or natural water course. So there, you've got the definition of land disturbing activity, the definition of sedimentation, which that land disturbing activity, you have to meet that two-part test. The, and this ordinance that regulates this has been in effect since 2001. The requirements surrounding the grading license program, which we're discussing here tonight, is the only thing that has been added to that 2001 state model sedimentation erosion control ordinance in this amendment process. Nothing else has been added to or taken away from this ordinance. And with that being said, the questions that I had received via email and comments received at the previous meeting, I can say right now with 100% certainty that any activity a homeowner is currently conducting on their property, which is not regulated by this ordinance today, will not be regulated by this ordinance following the passage of this amendment. Again, we have done nothing to change the purpose of this ordinance. We have done nothing to change the definition which comprise the purpose of this ordinance. The grading license program has been in effect since 2008. Again, it was unanimously approved. Many of the things you're seeing, the requirements that accompany this grading license program, such as the test, the fees associated with the program, they're already in place. Now, there are minor changes to some of that, but the program has been in place since 2008, and the, so the people have been participating in this program. Again, the Macon County licensed grading contractors were invited to the public input session. And with that being said, again, I just wanted to take some time because some of these questions, like, "What will I be able to do with my property? Will I be able to, will I be able to build a swing set? Will I be able to put my daughter's kiddie pool in the yard? Will I be able to build a six-inch flower bed?" The fact of the matter is, if this was not a land disturbing activity prior to the adoption of this amendment into this ordinance, it's not gonna be a land disturbing activity after the adoption of this ordinance. And I think that's where a lot, those questions anyway, had gotten counted, the water had gotten muddied. And so I just wanted to take an opportunity for everybody out there to clear that up. This amendment was added into this ordinance. The fundamental purpose of this ordinance was not changed. I've had conversations, not only with Jack, but members of the planning board who can, who are here and will attest to the fact tonight, that the primary intent, as they were going through and making the recommendations for this amendment, was simply to substantiate something that we had been doing procedurally since 2008. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I would like to turn the public hearing back over to you. I would, again, just say that with that, I just hope to give you a timeline, a little bit of an idea of what has led into this process, where we are heading when we come out of this process tonight, and just a fact that I have discussed with our county attorney and as well as our administrator and members of the planning board, that I felt like that would clear up some of those questions we were getting, so we could, perhaps, the public hearing could focus on the amendment itself and have a discussion on that, which, again, is not a new ordinance, or is not changing the purpose of this ordinance. It is just substantiating a procedure that we have had in effect since 2008.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Board, any questions for that?
Patrick, were you gonna mention the substantial changes to the license requirements before we start?
I think that Jack's here tonight, and he was gonna, if we have any, or we can do that right now.
Can you just clear that up? It's safe. That's okay.
You ready, or y'all want?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Would it be appropriate for us to comment, Derek, or wait until we end, or how?
Yeah, that's fine.
The only question I've got, is I see this is a two-pronged amendment, the grading license program, that's, we discussed that, the exclusions, the exceptions in the proposed amendment is what raised it. My question, Derek, is that. In the original grading license program, there was no mention of land on, whatever, land disturbing activity on this property. And I asked Jack in the meeting if the guy wanted to build a cross-tie wall on this property, would that qualify as land disturbing? And his response was yes. So if you go to the definition of land disturbing activity in the complete ordinance, and then you look at this, where a private land owner on this property may have a little backhoe or a shovel or whatever, and he wants to do something that qualifies as a land disturbing activity, that one definition, then he's gotta go take this open book test, as it's worded in the amendment, and then sign an affidavit that he will not sell or transfer that property for a year. What's the history of that? How does that work, and how did that fit if that's not a change to the original grading license program? Or how do we address that?
Right, and again, there are some, and Jack, if you could address the questions, kind of let the, give the planning board kind of the discussion that ensued on each of these. There are minor changes, as I said, to the grading license program itself. There is no fundamental change to the ordinance, but the program that we've known since 2008 has been, there are some changes to it that have been put into this ordinance. Now, still, it does not change what is a land disturbing activity and what is not. For the land disturbing activity, and as Jack will attest to, I think you've got to first put it through that two-pronged test. Do you remove the natural ground cover? Do you change the topography? And do you contribute to sedimentation, which is the silt or sediment leaving the site? So I think, or going into a river or natural water course. So I think all that, and it's, you know, this, in this ordinance, if you'll read, when you read through it, and I know, Paul, you and I have discussed, it puts the, the ordinance puts the property owner in the half acre or more. If you kind of look, there's one section in that, when you're talking about a half acre or more, that says it is the responsibility of the person conducting the land disturbing activity to come into the building inspections office, to meet with the ordinance administrator. Right, that's covered. The same, the same kind of thing, I think it is right now, and I think the intent, and I'm sure, I'm certainly not meaning to speak on behalf of the planning board, but I think the intent was to continue with the, with the spirit of how this was being enforced procedurally, but not to change the substance, what was considered land disturbing activity. No changes have been made to the purpose or the definition that make up that purpose. So I think up until now, you know, if so, and that's when, you know, you look at the questions like, "Well, can I put a swing set up?" Well, are you, would, if you were gonna put a swing set up before, would you have went in and talked to the administrator of this ordinance? I think if that retaining wall is on a sloped bank with a property down below it, that it's clearly, and you're removing that ground cover, and it's clearly gonna create sedimentation, which is leaving the site, then it's a different conversation than if you own 10 acres and that retaining wall is in the middle of a 10-acre field, and it's not gonna contribute to sedimentation leaving the site. So it's all relative, and this ordinance not, it builds in the discretion of that administrator to have those conversations with the individual as they're gonna come in and submit the plan. And up until now, I can't think of any complaints that the process that we have in place, while it hasn't been substantiated in the ordinance, I can't think of any, or I know I haven't had any complaints of an onerous application of this ordinance by the administrator. Jack was here when this was in effect in '08, or would you just, had you just came back?
Came back in '08.
Jack had been here when this was in effect, and he saw that, he saw it come into effect the first time, and has been working and furthering the procedure since it was put in place in 2008. And I don't think with this, Jack, it was your intention to, to change the overall spirit of what you've been doing since 2008.
It's not, it's not necessarily defined.
Right. Well, Jack, could you speak to any discussion, the planning board? Well, Jack, could you speak to any discussion the planning board had, I guess, leading up to kind of the question that Mr. Higdon has?
Mr. Higdon's questions, what I'm addressing. It's like they always say, talk's cheap, but making a repair on somebody else's property or getting sedimentation out of the stream is not cheap. So our thought with this owner contractor thing was that we'd rather have the conversation with the owner before he does something that does get him in trouble, that didn't cause him anything to discuss it, didn't cause him anything to be able to do this, we just want a knowledge-based test that you're going to be able to tactically keep that soil on your property. That was the intent of this. The reason it came up at all is the majority of our complaints are based on people that did something on their own property. It's not these contractor guys. They know what they're doing. They're not a problem.
Why do you need a license?
I'm sorry?
Why do you need a license if they're not a problem?
Well, most of them got a state license anyway. So, but we do have a lot of people that, a lot of contractors, I would say a lot, I say several, that operate basically under the $30,000 threshold, which requires state license. This would give some validity to them, because if the homeowner asks what kind of license you have, what kind of certification you have to do this kind of work, so I don't have anything. That's not a good answer, especially if you need the work. So the reason, that's the reason for the license primarily, as well as education. This is more an educational opportunity than it is an enforcement opportunity, is the way I said, Mr. Higdon. The planning board was pretty much the same way. We talked about all kinds of education. Who is it came presented the H2O program that their county established in western North Carolina, where it's groups of counties offer this education to people. So that's, in my opinion, Mr. Higdon, the purpose of this. I'm not going to answer any questions now. And I will say, well, I've got, I'll tell you for just a second, the planning board worked hard, they debated this back and forth amongst themselves with the contractors, with the attorney president, had meetings, and I've got a lot of emails and calls, discussions from the planning board members that had received this, or through talks with them. So this has not been in the dark, it's not been overnight, it's not been underhand.
Jack, there's been so much Indianio and just plain old, you know, stuff put out there that's just not true, that this board is looking at this ordinance. The reason it was always here was originally passed. It was originally passed, not from most of these boys sitting in this room. These people go out here renting track holes, which we battled through, you remember it well, renting the track holes, renting the equipment, going to the fisher property, and absolutely running not only it, but its neighbor's property. And it was case, it was several cases like that. And this was intended to be an educational process, where those people had to come in, and they had somebody that needed to know what was going on before it was too late. You stick a big track hole in the ground, it can be too late in about two hours if we found out. That was the gist of the soil erosion when it first started. That was the gist of it. And then he stayed in, and it's like Derek said, if you read the ordinance, there's nothing really changes here. I think what the, if the owner, I don't know, I've been in the business about 38 years, I don't know of no owner, maybe one, that done his own grading for his house that was not a grading contractor. And that's really what this speaks to, is situations like that. You're talking about a half acre, nothing has really changed in the definitions where we started from. Now, the license requirements have changed, they're going to make it more simple, I think, if we hold, that's the whole idea of the thing. But the thing about you can't plant a bush, you can't do this, you can't do this on your own property, that's just we've rolled way out of proportion, and people are not getting licensed, they even got a letter saying that the people who've done England didn't get their license, the grading license. Well, they did. And a lot of people don't need grading license, you know, the landfill, for instance, they don't need a grading license, true, that's, they're under the state regulations. So, and if you own, and I think you go again to this, but if you own a state grading license, you know, I think we all agree, there's no reason to have a Macon County red license, and that's in here. So it's been a lot of stuff that we couldn't answer because this is the place to answer the questions for these people sitting in this room. So I just want to throw that in. A little history.
And that license is not recognized anywhere except for Macon County?
That's right. That's exactly right. That's what it was intended to do. We can't have what goes on in Jackson County, we want to try to protect what little water we got here.
If there are people in, like, hey, look, people come out of Andrews, do the work Highlands, a lot of people out of Sapphire, it's going to take a lot of chasing people down. And the initial program was never, I don't think it was ever enforced adequately. You said it saved a lot of strains and stuff, but I mean, grading, I mean, not grading, but...
The idea was not enforcement when it started, was it, Jack?
No, it's in there.
But yeah, but it was, the idea was to educate when it was to enforce.
It's black and white, that's, to me, is the intent.
Jack, is the discussion here just centered upon locations? If somebody from another county comes in, they'll probably need it. How does this work for the two municipalities within our county?
If we have jurisdiction within those municipalities, it would fly. The town of Islands has their own erosion control and sedimentation program, so we have no jurisdiction.
But you do, you wouldn't find one in this county.
If Franklin wants to start to run this, certainly up to there.
Yes.
And that's a land disturbing activity for than a half acre?
By the definition, and I didn't make this definition up, it's, you got to change the photography, remove the cover, and you may contribute to sedimentation.
But it doesn't apply to, I mean, it applies to less than a half acre, it applies to anything you do on your property that removes the natural ground cover or changes the topography.
And...
Results in sedimentation, leaving your property and going to someone else's property, or entering a stream, or a natural water course, or a lake.
Macon Tribute. These are legal definitions.
Jack, any further questions here?
Jack, in your, in the time you've enforced this ordinance and went through this ordinance, do you, in your opinion, I mean, has this, are these, is the changes that have been made not to, again, not to the ordinance, but when you take what we've been doing in practice and putting it into the ordinance, is it going, in your opinion, to result in an increase in your, increase in your workload? Or are these...
I feel it's probably decreasing, because knowledgeable people are less likely to make, commit a violation. I mean, do a lot of people that want to do work on their property, do they know how, what the trapstream buffer is? Do they know what a trapstream buffer is? How far it is? Do they understand watershed development regulations that are state mandated? Do they understand DOT requirements if you put a driveway into the DOT? There's a lot of things that we answer during the application process that keeps us from having a workload out in the field.
And is that kind of why the, with this, and we've talked about some of the changes, when the planning board had sent the invites to the grading contractors, is the reason those were sent to the grading contractors is because this is primarily who's affected by this?
Does that affect them? Yes. At the, like the old way we did it, everybody had to have license, but if you got a state license with the new program, you wouldn't have to. But we wanted their opinion on this license program, because they are grading contractors in this county, so we needed their input.
Anything further before we have that part of the portion? All right, and we're going to look forward to taking some comments from the public now. I'm just going to remind you of a few things that I mentioned earlier. Again, this is a public hearing, so it offers everyone in the county, whoever wants to come and speak, the opportunity to speak to this, either for it or against it, or impartial, or maybe some thoughts on improvement, or again, or maybe completely. I think it's been stated by Derek Chester, if you'd like to weigh in on this comment, this board's not going to be taking any action on this tonight, other than some discussions that have answered a lot more to it than what we're going to be able to do tonight, correct?
I think that is correct. Furthermore, you need state approval, not just review, but approval. And I suspect, as a result of this hearing tonight, there will be some ideas brought to the board's attention that may need to be incorporated. We're in the process right now. I envision the likelihood of an additional public hearing on this matter before it would actually be a, like, the term process.
Macon sausage. Again, three-minute time limit, just trying, I've been to enough of these, since I've been on this board, to see that sometimes civil discourse does not always happen. Just please try and be respectful of everyone, just like we're being up here. We're here to hear your opinions. We want to know whether you're for it, against it, and why. The why is the big reason. We want to know the things we can improve, or again, maybe not have it at all. We want to know, we're here to discuss. So with that being said, let's get started. First on the list is Mr. Howell Jacobs.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call me in on our veterans that were here a while ago, what they did for the freedom of our country. And it seems like anymore, the government's taken away part of our freedoms, the county's taken away from our freedoms. If we want to do certain things, we have to come to the county courthouse and say, hey, can I do this, or can I do that, different ordinances. And I know this sediment erosion control ordinance is kind of questionable, and I'd actually like to ask Paul, if these new amendments to these ordinances, how is that going to benefit Howell Jacobs and Hannah Hill? Any at all? If I want to do a little bit of work on my property, I got to come to Franklin, go through the, run the gauntlet to do certain things. And I'd ask you this too. If we use just the old, put into action the ordinances of the old ordinance of the sediment control, would everything be just as good rather than adding all these new amendments? Is the old ordinances, why didn't they work if they're put into action? Make sure that it's done. With the new amendments?
I don't think so. Don't have to say. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. I'm sorry, I have difficulty reading. It looks like, is it Danny? Is that correct? Your last name, sir?
Smeltzer.
Smeltzer, thank you. Right. Are you a doctor?
Not hurt. Nor am I an excavator.
But I did have some concerns about the, about the, the amendments to the ordinance, and that was, they were talking about earlier about me having to sign an affidavit about me. I live, I live very, well, right on Otter Creek, so I want to protect that and do everything I can to keep it clean because I have trout in there. So with that, with that in mind, anything, everything I do is going to be to protect the stream. Now, if I have dead trees, I have a little over three acres there. If I have dead trees and what have you that I need to clear out, it's six tenths of an acre, then I have to come over here and take tests, and, or, I don't have to take the test, I just...
You want me to do nothing?
I don't do anything?
No.
Okay. But I do, do I have to sign an order?
No. No, then it's over, are you disturbing the land?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to disturb the land?
Yeah, I'm going to take, yeah, I'm going to take up roots, stump, and stuff like that, and put a metal...
Derek, you want me to explain that?
If it's not a, just like today, if it's not a land disturbing activity today, as we said earlier, which is what this ordinance regulates, if it's not a land disturbing activity today, it's not going to be a land disturbing activity after these amendments are passed.
Okay, all right. Did I misunderstood the whole thing?
Now, if, second part to that, if this is a land disturbing activity, then it would, you would have to take the grade, you would have to get the license.
Yeah, I'm going to track the work.
But until, right. But until that the administrator reviews, or has, reviews, or looks at, if it's going to be close to the creek where you feel it would be close enough, hey, there could potentially be sediment leaving and going into the creek, then, you know, you would need to take that to the administrator, if you felt like the project was going to get to that scale where it would create a potential to cause sedimentation or erosion into a natural water course.
And I do it myself.
Sure.
Then I have to take the test.
Right. No, not if it, no, not if it's not land disturbing activity.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I mean, it...
I don't understand land disturbing.
Right.
Anytime I tear the ground up on top, that's land disturbing, right?
A land disturbing activity is any use of the land by any person in residential, industrial, educational, institutional, or commercial development, highway and road construction and maintenance, that results in a change in the natural cover or topography, and may cause or contribute to sedimentation. If you're cutting trees down...
Taking up stumps.
If you're taking, if you're taking up stumps...
Yeah.
Then is the sediment leaving, is the sediment going into the creek when you're taking the stumps up?
It could be. I've got to put a buffer up there and keep it from doing so, and go like that grass and what have you there.
Well, right now, when, if you come in and go over this with the administrator, and he says, hey, yeah, this is going to meet the definition as said in this ordinance of land disturbing activity, then yes.
Then I've got to sign an affidavit saying that I can't sell my...
That would be a part of this amendment as proposed, yes, sir. Now, if he, if it...
The question to you then is how many of you in here know for a fact that you're going to be alive in six months? You're asking me to sign that thing for years, saying I can't sell my property, I can't transfer, can't do anything with it, for a year. I don't have a clue what's going to go on in six months.
Right.
Or my, or my family has to deal with it for six months or something like that. To me, that's really kind of, I don't know whether that's data, to be honest with you, I really don't. And as far as controlling it all or maintaining it, you're charging fees for people to come over here, take these licenses and go have everybody, I'm talking about the contract. In other words, you're going to have to, you're going to have to keep up with that improvement. Islands to riot and that to hail, it's going to take a lot of people driving the roads, making sure people aren't, you know, taking advantage of the revenue. I think personally, plus in Macon, if I'm, everybody, for anybody that I have anything to do with, do work for me, is going to be from Brass and City, or Robbinsville, or Andrews, and each one of those in a different county, are y'all going to go to those people in different counties to make sure that they have the same, that they come over here and take the same test, if the job is ever going to happen? There are a lot too, Derek. It's not just, we're going to do this and that's it.
Thank you, Danny. Good comments, good comments. Randy, shut up.
Gentlemen, with all due respect, I'm having a really hard time hearing.
Me too.
Is those microphones up?
Are you having a hard time hearing the speaker? Thank you, gentlemen. Allow me to speak on this again. I have several major concerns on this thing. And the more I read, it seems like the more I get confused. While I read on this new proposal, any land disturbing activity, no matter the cost, is we're going to have to come in and take tests, or only get grading license, or whatever it does. It's, I've got several different tracks of property, I do improve it constantly, you know. I don't want to run Franklin every time I decide to flatten out a little piece of ground and make it look better, or do something like that. So that's, I'm very concerned about what I can do on a homeowner's property. And the Macon County Soil Erosion Ordinance says we can clear up to half an acre without a erosion control plan. a erosion control plan. I'm concerned that you're going to ask me to come in and get a grading license or take the test and pass the test just to do little projects on my own land. And it's, I think we're going a little bit overboard on a lot of this stuff. But everybody I know takes a lot of pride in having the property work. And I've seen very few bad operators come to Hannah Haylen and make messes. You build a name, you get a reputation, a good work, and that's who people are going to hire. And under that exception on that, my property owner being penalized for doing improvement projects on their own land, I care a lot about my property. It looks like most everyone owns over there. I signed an affidavit saying I will not sell my property for one year after improvements is done. It's ridiculous. It sounds to me like a dictatorship instead of democracy.
Yes.
Okay, in case of emergency, I've got a personal driveway that's about a half mile long, and I almost have a slide on my driveway. And I had an emergency at my house with one of my primary commanders. Do you expect me to come over here and get a grading permit before I move that slide and get an ambulance or a fire truck in? It's just, I just, you want to take fault. I see a lot of common sense not put into this thing. And I hope we can change some of these lines of conversation.
Thank you. Kathy? I'm sorry, Derek. What's your last name?
Tinsley.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Tinsley. I'm vice chair of the planning board. Joe Deal is the chair. He called me today and said he couldn't be here. I want to thank Derek for giving us that background of, because of the timeframe of how we did this, but it was that in the late winter, early spring, we were asked as a planning board to look at the licensure program. And in June is when we met with contractors and talked with them, the ones that were there. And in July, we kept tossing this around and formulated the part that, the new part that you see in the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. As we talked to the contractors, it felt to us like most of them were in favor of doing this program if more bite could be put into it, if it could be lifted up a little bit from what it had been and mean a little bit more to them. After, as I'm on the planning board, after I think about our mission statement, one of the first things that came to mind, as I said in that meeting, is asking the contractors, "Does this help you? Have you had situations where it really helped you have this, this license?" And some of them indeed said, "Yes, that it did." Gave them some credibility. So that meant something to me on the personal level as I, as I listened to their comments. I was surprised, I'm an antique, I'm not on social media, so I was really surprised that this had gone this far with, and maybe it's true, the planning board needs to go back and revisit some of this definition of, of land disturbing activities. I don't know about that, but I just felt like we were focusing on one thing, looking at the contractor advisory program, and I think we came up with a, with a good solution. You look at these things from your own personal background, and I know I've been privileged to see the work of just great Macon County contractors, and I don't want to do anything to hurt, hurt them. So that meant a lot to me. And then, I'm a former teacher. When I hear the word "test," my hackles kind of go up because I taught lots of young men that I knew could get out there and do a great job grading and building roads, but I was worried about this test aspect. So I got a copy of the test and I looked at it, and I learned that it was open book. And as I say, you know, that was just my, my radar kind of went up on the, on the whole test thing. But as I looked at it, I showed it to one contractor, he did not think it was, you know, an onus on anybody to, you know, that they should have that knowledge as they went in to do, do the work. So again, kind of surprised at all the, the new things that have come out after we talked about this, but I feel like placing it where we did, and the sediment mitigation and erosion control ordinance just adds to the validity of the program. And again, we were trying to, to give this thing a little bit more status possibly, and we're focusing on the licensure program itself. Thank you.
Kathy Wallace?
Well, as you ones are well aware, many people are questioning this proposed amendment. For starters, do we have erosion control problems in our county that are not already covered by state regulations? What problem is this proposed amendment meant to address? Is it erosion and sedimentation, or occupational licensure, or what exactly? Who is it designed to protect, and what is the likelihood that we lose those? It addresses monetary value of work less than $30,000, but isn't monetary value as a determinant rather arbitrary? Will a state licensed contractor required for work above $30,000 also need a county license for jobs under 30,000? How much soil can be disturbed, and by whom, and what kind of soil, and on what degree of slope? And who decides the potential, the may word, the potential for erosion and sedimentation? Do we have a soil scientist on staff in the county? Who will enforce violations? Who will decide if a $500 per day penalty is issued? And is that a fine for disturbance, disturbance of soil, or for being unlicensed, or for refusing to take a test? What is it for? Has there been a cost projection for actually administering these required tests as well as enforcement for every citizen who wants to disturb soil on their own property? Does the required test for a county grading license apply to someone who wants to plow up an acre of soil to plant elderberries to sell at the flea market? Or to construct a root lot? Or a hog wallow? Or a half-acre family cemetery? Why would you want to test, run, and manipulate someone on the end of an activity rather than dealing after the fact with the minuscule number of people who actually do cause erosion? Penalizing them for any actual damage they've caused? Are you sure that you can legally require someone to not sell or even advertise their property for sale for some arbitrary length of time regardless of its condition? Isn't that some kind of violation of individual property rights? Macon County has in place a number of protective programs that benefit longtime property owners here, including present use value taxation, which is one of the most beneficial aspects of property ownership in our county. A program that contributes to stability and historic preservation of agriculture and forestry and our environment. Also valuable for property owners is the VAD program, V-A-D, Voluntary Agricultural District. A program offered by our county's Soil and Water Conservation Office, whereby a property owner, through deeds in the courthouse and public notice signage provided by the Soil and Water Conservation Office, can notify the public, neighbors, and potential buyers that your property is agricultural and that you will be engaging in commonly accepted agricultural practices involving noisy machinery and the use of products that some non-farmers might find disturbing. This is the kind of county government we need. The kind that looks out for our well-being without micromanagement of our livelihood and threats of fines. And I urge all landowners to look into these programs. This proposal, however, as now written, this amendment tied to the rest of it, is a solution in search of a problem. It's poorly written, vague, and open to multiple interpretations. The intention might be good, even admirable, but it has no clear rationale or focus. Ostensibly, it is about prevention of erosion and sedimentation, but in effect, it's about revenue generation and occupational licensure. It's an exercise in arbitrariness and governmental overreach of the worst kind, the kind that just creeps upon you and hunkies you. This proposal is largely unnecessary and is more of an impediment than a benefit to our county. This proposal needs to be scrapped, or at least seriously rewritten, clarified, and refocused as to purpose and implementation in a manner that respects and protects the personal property rights of our citizens. We live in a beautiful rural environment, and we are well aware of the consequences of mountain living, including natural disasters such as the Peaks Creek debris flow and the human-caused wildflower disaster. And now, we must work to protect our property rights from such dire consequences as this ill-conceived and ill-advised proposal.
David, call for him.
Have we established that this regulates land disturbing activity under a half acre? Is that clear?
No.
Have we established that this 153.23 licensure requirements will affect people doing land disturbing activity under one half acre?
We're discussing that tonight.
Mr. Jones, your own ordinance?
No, I didn't.
You didn't write this amendment?
No.
Do you give legal counsel to, if it establishes, if this regulates land disturbing activity under one half acre?
Did I give legal counsel?
No, will you give us legal counsel?
I will give this board legal counsel.
Okay. Well, the board member asked Mr. Jones the question of if this regulates land disturbing activity under one half acre. Because that's how you guys are selling it. I mean, this might have been a good intention, but a lot of you good commissioners who I like, and I'm the bad guy here, you're going after me pretty hard, because I'm going after you pretty hard. It's not well-written. It's just not. And I'm sorry to be the bad guy, because here in a couple weeks, I'm going to have to start working with you real hard on some projects that I want to help the town and the county get done.
Are you representing the town here tonight, David, or for...
No, sir, I'm not. I'm a, I'm representing as a citizen of Bega County.
I just wanted...
Can anybody answer the question, if this regulates land disturbing activity under one half acre?
Did you read it up?
Potentially. We're still discussing that, Tom. Can you ask your attorney representative for his legal counsel?
I'm sure he will. Go ahead.
I've already asked him. He won't answer me.
Continue on, we'll get to it.
I mean, that's my question. I think, I think a lot of us have covered it already.
I'd be happy to.
Sure, go ahead.
I think that the proposed amendment could well result in situations where this amendment at least would apply to situations of less than a half acre. If it, if it is a land disturbing activity that is defined, as defined by the land disturbing...
This is, this is left up to an administrator, too, and this carries a $500 per day fine to your constituents. Let that sink in. This is an arbitrary definition, this to be interpreted by an administrator that carries a $500 per day fine. This is serious, and that's why I'm making such a big deal out of it. Deliberate. Think about this. Think this through. Read it. Understand it. These are legal definitions. I hate it to have to interrupt here twice, but they're legal definitions. This man's an attorney. People who are attorneys will take somebody and break them over the coals using this ordinance if the land use administrator thinks it's a land disturbing activity at $500 a day. It can also become a class two misdemeanor. You could face jail time. Here in a society, when we're trying to get people to use their hands, get them back to the land, we're trying to get shop classes and hands-on classes back in high schools. Here, we're trying to limit people from actually using their hands and using their land? I've done land disturbing activity. Some of the most content days of my life are after I've looked at my yard and landscaped it, and I am beat, and I'm about to fall over and my feet hurt. But I look what I've done and I say, "Man, I've done a good job," and I'm tired. That's rewarding in life, and we're taking that away from people, one ordinance at a time, and it's wrong. If you want to regulate soil erosion and sedimentation, enforce the existing ordinance. It is extensive and intensive and prescribes fines for people who violate it. We don't need a grading license program that forces people to sign their rights to their property away, take a test, and that can fine $500 per day at the discretion of an administrator. An administrator. Thank you, gentlemen.
Kathy Wallace, sir? My comments are general, but they are brief. I want to thank you all for your service to Macon County, its citizens, and its natural resources. That's kind of what this, at the core, is all about. For over 20 years, the Little Tennessee, well, excuse me, Watershed Association, Land Trust for the Little Tennessee, and now Main Spring Conservation Trust has worked to conserve the waters of Little Tennessee River and its tributaries, as well as the lands surrounding these waters. As you know, sediment is the leading pollutant to our mountain streams and rivers. The primary goal of many of Main Spring's conservation and restoration projects is to minimize sediment input into our streams. Main Spring supports sound land management practices such as those promoted in this ordinance. We encourage the county to continue taking the necessary steps to protect these clear mountain waters that provide ideal fish habitat, drinking water, and recreation by keeping them free of sediment and other pollutants. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to state, who's not signed up? Approach. Your name, please.
Angela Moore.
Angela Moore.
I really understand the intent of this ordinance, but your desire is to protect the property rights of people who are adjacent to people who are grading their lands. This is no small issue, and, and I know that this could be disastrous for someone up to the limit, digging on a property line and causing landslide or erosion into their property. But I am concerned about some of the wording. Not to be a dead horse, but the use of the word "may" in land disturbing activity, it creates fear, especially people who've had less than positive run-ins with the government before, or like many of the citizens here, who have a tendency to have a general distrust. I think that finding a way to reword that would probably go a long way to make... I think that finding a way to reword that would probably go a long way to making people more comfortable with this. Like I said, I know that that's not anything new, but it may serve the public well. The other big wording thing that I would really like to see you guys address that I haven't heard anyone mention is, well, excuse me, obviously, there's the affidavit. I'm very much against that. The idea that you would have to sign something like that is debatable, in my opinion. But it's not just that. I've heard all of you repeatedly say that if you're not engaging in land disturbing activities, you don't need to come in and do the license, which means if you're not causing sedimentation. But there is another reason that you would need the license, if you're grading. The term grading is used under exceptions. This section shall not apply to anyone who is actually performing the grading or land disturbing activities on property they personally own and do not sell or offer sale or transfer to another party per period of one year after completion. The term grading is not defined, so we would have to rely on a general definition of grading. Now, something we see around here all the time, especially people with farm equipment, is they stick the grater on their tractor and they grade their driveway, or their mother's driveway, or their neighbor's driveway, or, you know, maybe that comfy spot in somebody's front yard that's relatively flat. It's not land disturbing activity, but it definitely, under this definition, it requires a license. My husband and I are in this exact situation. We have a yard that's had several tree stumps removed. In fact, we rented the equipment and did it ourselves. We've seriously considered renting a grater so that our children don't turn their angles running over the hummocky land. While this most certainly wouldn't be land disturbing activity, it would be grading. So I would ask you to consider removing that term or defining it in a way so that it would not encompass everyone. My preference would be that you not require private citizens to get this kind of licensing at all, although I do understand that it creates a more difficult enforcement for our building department. But it's actually something I'd like you to consider, asking them to bear that burden, not because the work is easy or because they should have to do it, but simply because the cost of not bearing that burden is taking away our private property rights. So I thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing what you do.
Thank you. One of Ms. Moore's comments of the term grading, that is one of the technical changes that I would be recommending to this. Just take that term out off, get it.
Thank you, Jessica. Anyone else? Any questions from the board? Is this it? Jessica, would it be appropriate to place the public comment?
Most important, to make sure one more, one last time, if anybody else has a desire to speak, whether they were on this, signed up or not.
Anyone else like to speak? Going ones, going by soul? All right. I'd also like to, might put into the record, I received, I'll read the names, nine emails, four proposed change, Kathy Stillwell, William McLarnie, Nancy Scott, Chris Hammers, Susan Urban, Mr. and Ms. Kowanski, Jean Honeycutt, Bill Crawford, and I received one email from David Koffeberger against it. So if we replace those in the record. We're still going to discuss it some more, so. I'm going to close the public session just to get us.
I signed another paper.
We're still going to discuss, if you want to hang out and listen, so.
No, it's not about the ordinance. I signed another.
It'll come up after we close this. Thank you, David. I'll go ahead and start and leave this off with things that I've heard tonight that made me open my mind a little bit about this potential change and still give me something to ponder until we can potentially discuss this again, as one is, as the size of it for a part. I don't think that there's any of us in here, well, let me rephrase that. I think we all could potentially understand the intent, if you get an out-of-hand neighbor with bulldozers, or how it might adversely affect you. So I think there's a purpose and intent for what the planning board and the potential of this board is trying to do. Is there a reason, maybe it might cure some of the clarification issues, which there seem to be a whole lot of miscommunication, misunderstanding of how you interpret certain words and then sort of, is the size of it? Is it a quarter acre? Is it an eighth of an acre? Is it an acre? Maybe there's a size of it on it. Also, I wrote down the word vague, because there seems to be a lot of confusion in the room tonight about what actually can do, what you can't do, and even David was looking at me earlier. I couldn't answer him. I don't know. I'm still learning, too. I'm up here trying to understand and trying to make good decisions from the county based upon all the information that I can gather. I think that's part of being a good public servant. I wrote down the word confusion. Again, there seem to be some confused looks in here, including myself. And I wrote down the idea of the term that I picked up, too, which is education. I think that's part of the intent of what's trying to get across here, is try to keep people from doing something wrong. Is it the right way? Is it the wrong way? I'm still pondering that, still thinking about it. I think education is a good thing for everybody, especially on this topic where it can adversely affect potentially our streams, our waterways, and our neighbors. I will be pondering those, and I welcome any of the other commissioners to provide their thoughts as well.
There were some very good points brought up, I think. Ms. Wallace brought some very good points, as it being lacered, and why is it there in the first place? That's what you've got to remember. Why was it implemented in the first place? And it was like Ms. Moore said, to prevent that neighbor from turning the water down on you. We still have those problems today. Jack can attest to that. And I think the man mentioned that he had a slide in his driveway. If you forget the second part of that ordinance, is it going to endanger the water? Is it going to, we're trying to protect the water stream and to protect the neighbor, you're joining neighbor. That's the whole idea behind the whole thing, and that was the intent of it when it started. It's still the intent today, I believe, Mr. Man, unless I'm reading it wrong again. Still, the whole intent of the whole thing is protect your neighbor. If you're moving tree stumps out, and if you're on Otter Creek and you're moving tree stumps, but I really, and I've always said before, on the affidavit signing, I think that's something we just really need to think about, because I think there were some good points made on that. And if, you know, we're trying to prevent it before it happens, because Nascar's so expensive, and there's cases to be documented. If you do let the water, if you do do work on your property, it gets on somebody else's property, it is a major deal. We've been down that road, too. So, but there was some good points made, Mr. Chairman, and we'll have a public debate.
I agree. I agree. Good discussion, Mike. Here.
I think the number of things that made me perk up a little bit, it's that you, a lot of times, you have access to another county, and those people then have to have qualifications for here. And I think that's a red flag for me, whether you're going to Raven, you're going to Swain County, or Murphy, anything, anybody that's coming from another county, let's just say Andrew's, coming to Attana Hala to do some work, they're out of county. So that's something that I'm thinking about. How do you correct that? Also, the death part, the gentleman that brought that up, that's something that, I've read this a number of times, that needs to be looked at. Go back and talk about the emergency situation on your property. If you have an emergency, the road goes into the creek or whatever it may be, you know, how do you respond? How are you able to respond with that legally without being in a situation of where you're fined? And I still think the reason to initiate fines is not money for the county, it's supposed to be a deterrent. You'll do things right, because I don't want to pay a fine. It doesn't have the coffers, I don't think so, of the county that much, but maybe that's not a deterrent. The write-up, is it clear? And I've discussed this with my colleagues up here, and I didn't know if I'm just dense or sometimes I struggle trying to wrap my arms around what something means. And you've got legal terms in here that you just have to understand, like grading, and I put that in my notes here, but then also the word affidavit that came up. These are things that you pointed out tonight that allows us to understand this a little bit more. And I want to say thank you for giving us that opportunity, and that's what it's all about.
Thank you, Commissioner Shilson.
Although, I just, you know, we do, if this is an occupancy, we are an occupiers going to license, 55 of, 57 of, in Macon already. You need a license to do about everything. It's proven that licensing limits entrepreneurship. And if this license mean anything, I possess a couple of state licenses, and I didn't take a open book test to get any of them. I have to show that I'm financially able to take care of mistakes that I make. The licensing board has a recovery fund, so when you become an occupational licensing body, it's a pretty big thing. The bad thing about this license is it is of no value to anyone. I've already said that if some people want to be recognized as having a license, if those people want to recognize that, go to Raleigh and get your license. Get a license that's recognized throughout the state, not some little piece of paper that says, "I've taken an open book test and I know how to put up a seal fence." That's of zero value to anybody. And I'm in the business. I've been in it. I watched the initial program. When it was up, it was a, I won't use, well, it was never an adequate program. I've seen people go out and rent land, and I've been on site, and all they had to do was come and get a license. Come out of the building enforcement office and pick up your license, pay you $25, whatever. It didn't work for five, 10, 15 years, and Macon County didn't fall off the mound. The creeks are not full of mud, so worth the credence to say that it's, we need this now, and it's going to save Macon County in the future. And I'm a property owner of Macon County. I'm blessed to be a property owner, as most of you are blessed to be property owners of Macon. It's the biggest investment we'll make in our lifetime. I'm not going to do anything that will damage or degrade the value or the beauty of my property. And by saying that, I trust in the knowledge of the individual property owner that he's going to protect his property. You cannot, now, you'll always have an ignorant person out there that's going to do something, yes, that damages his neighbor. You can't legislate immorality, or morality, or ignorance. If we had 10 of these programs in place, it's not going to keep those fluke things from happening. In the body of the erosion control ordinance, there's already a penalty. There's already a program to handle severe cases of sedimentation. It's $5,000 a day, depending on what the administrator, he can fine you up to $5,000 every day that that violation occurs. So why would we want to go from $5,000 to $500 a day? If you read the erosion control ordinance, there are provisions in this local ordinance, there's provisions in state ordinances, the Corps of Engineers, there's many people, regulatory agencies that regulate our water. And we, as Macon County landowners, I think love our waters and our streams more than anybody else, and I'll place my faith in those individual landowners any day before I'll place it into a document that is vaguely written and just seems to me to be to exert a little more control, governmental control, over what I can do as a conscientious landowner.
I guess first off, I'd like to recognize Jack and the planning board, the work that's been done to this. Probably been on the planning board, you know, I'm very, I test this year, I do pretty thick skin, because you ask to work on things, the president to the county commissioners, sometimes they sit on, sometimes they act on, and sometimes they get shocked, despite your best efforts. So thank you to everyone involved. Secondly, thank you to everyone who come out tonight and get comment. It is absolutely imperative that when this body is considering anything that affects citizens of Macon County, it got to have citizen input. I would encourage you to come to the planning board meeting when these issues are discussed, when the meetings are open, and believe me, I've been putting up open. Nobody was a tickle, somebody shows up and talks, so I just encourage everyone to come out, give us your input. Your input is crucial in our input, okay? And while I'm tickled you're here tonight and we're getting to this point, I would love to see it early on. I would love to see this type of input when we're discussing any type of issues early on and help mold that, help make it into something that represents our community as a whole. So the best way for that to happen is, you know, get on board, and I can't play that enough. You know, defensive violence, a lot of great points brought up tonight. I think a lot of those points, we can sit down one-on-one and go through and address those points and add clarity to it. I think there's some of those points that deserve some clarity in the form of language in this thing. There may be some things that need to come out, that's what we're going to have to determine. But I think we've got something to work with, we've got some great input that we can incorporate into that, and we ask all that are on the ground to be pleased with, whether it's fair or not. Well, I'll have to look into it. Thank you. Anyone else? Eric?
No, just, again, thank everybody for coming. That's going through the process. A lot of times, policy is like making sausage. It's ugly when it's going on, but it comes out sausage. And that's a very, this is a very crucial part of that process. It's ugly and it don't look like sausage when you're doing it, but it eventually looks like sausage, which is what I think Carl's saying, again, very valuable part of this process, of the public policy process, and this is what it's all about. Governments never operates better until it's operating alongside the citizens. And so just...
You have to wait for the contractor to put it back on to the public, to the landowners. That's what that, that's under that. To the landowners, he can't do that on his property. That's what's not. You pay the tax, you do it up.
I want to thank everyone for coming again. If y'all would like to slip out, please feel free. I would like to have one more to say, just a bone of contention with a couple of remarks that were said tonight that I have. I've been on, I've been a commissioner now, I believe, for six years. Anyone out here venture to guess how many new ordinances this board has passed, how many new rules and regulations? I heard that we keep passing them. How many have we passed since I've been in the board? One, we passed one. We made a recreation park back over in Sullivan, this board made it. They have reduced, reduced the use, so just wanted to bring that up. All right. Y'all are welcome to hang out with us. We're going to be discussing a lot more county business, so feel free to slip out. I'll give y'all a bridge or leave in a few minutes before we start back. Thank you, gentlemen. I hope you're in a good place. Thank you. Thank you, everybody up here. I'm trying to get away. You on the cough drop?
If you got a cough drop, I may even candy you.
All right, we're going to move on to item number six on our agenda, which is the public comment period. Mr. Jacobs, welcome back. He'll speak to recycling centers of Bellic.
We'll be gracious here. I don't hardly know how to start. I would like, since I've been here, the last time has any of you been to Nana Hill? I do a dress here, the... Have you addressed any of the things that I mentioned the last time, the recycling center, the community building?
Chris, about your, uh-
You're Chris? Good to meet you.
I am Chris.
You too, sir.
You, gentlemen, today, did anybody haul the garbage off today in Franklin?
That is-
In Franklin?
No.
Anybody in Franklin? Did you get your shoes moved?
No.
Why?
There wasn't any money.
Did you haul any off today?
Did.
Did you get your shoes moved?
Absolutely.
Did you get yours moved?
Real moved.
That's one of my, I'm not belittling you guys in any way, but we've got problems in Nantahale. And it don't seem like that anybody much cares.
You want to talk about, you want to commission Higginson's conversation, or?
Well, I will say first of all that I wish all our centers were paid, if, for the phone calls, nothing else. But in fact, we have eleven centers, five of them are paid, six of them are not. So Nantahale is not getting paid. Neither is Scaly, because we have those three and three closer to town that are not paid. One of the five that are paid was sort of a private deal that happened some time ago. We have plans, we have drawings, there are things we would like to do in all the centers. I've wanted to do for years. It's just a matter of capital outlay and prioritizing, and we've just gone through the landfill expansion and development of the new cell, and that has sort of boogered the process of other capital expenditures for probably the last five or six years in preparation. Access, not an excuse, it's just a reason.
It seems to me like people in Nantahale that tells me how you're wasting your time and you're wasting your breath, but kind of note here. And I keep hoping that before there's five new faces on that wall up there, that the people in Nantahale will say, "Those guys did us a, done us a gentleman job." But our community building, like I said, it's double-wide trailer, it's still leaking. It's, we need, we need to be upgraded. And it just don't seem like anybody really cares. We don't have anybody over here that seem like on our side. We appreciate the place that we've got to throw our garbage away, but we're stemming out in mud. And you want to talk about erosion control, y'all see it over there right now, we need erosion control around that for all the mud. Don't kid. You know about hauling stone, don't you? Well, you know about gravel? Yes. How many tons of stone you think it takes to fix up that hell over there?
Oh, probably thirty tons. Clean stone with plenty of that, probably.
Which side of it looking at?
The whole loop.
Oh, that's scum.
Both the scum.
Scum.
Couple of wood loads.
But that's a band-aid.
Probably two loads.
We don't want to, band-aid's fine, but we don't want a band-aid. We don't want it, we'd like to see it paid. I know gravel's a good effort, but guys, it's a muddle. Now, Mr. Ronnie told me one time it was too soft. Well, if it's too soft, we can dig it out and put stone in and pave over top of it.
I don't know how many tons of gravel have been put over there, over the years, I don't know, but-
It seems to be bottomless.
I mean, that could be fixed, though. Go in there, grade it out, put matting down.
Sure.
Put stone down, and pave it, and you never have to worry about putting gravel on it again.
Well, there are a couple of issues at our sites in Highlands is, that we don't own. And one or both of them, one of them is owned by the Nantahale, and one is owned by Duke Energy. Am I incorrect in that? So some years ago, I sought to make significant changes at Juneau'ska, but Duke Energy was going through their, their process, and for some reason, I don't remember the history, they weren't that happy with us at the time, and so they would not allow me to do anything at that site. Over the past year, I have, I have sort of reached back out to them. I would like to make that a one-way center by adding an exit on that little side road, can't think of the, don't know the name of it, but I'm sure you know what it's called. The Old River. Don't want to go, yeah, yeah, that's it. And after a year of talking, Duke, the Forest Service, DOT, nobody claims ownership of that road, so nobody can tell me that I can have access to it. So it's not that we, it's not that we're not thinking about you, it's just there are hurdles, there are hurdles to the changes that need to be made at the Highlands Road Center. And probably our best, the center's in the best shape, and the newer one is Otto, and I can't stand that because I don't like the layout. So, I mean, you're, you're not the Lone Ranger on having problems with your centers. I think the centers are the face of the county. There's no other facility that everybody in this county walks through, drives through on a weekly basis, like our centers. Man, I wish they were back there. But we are, we are where we are with them, and there's a, like I said, there's not one single reason or one single center that is ignored or a lower priority than any other. We just, we just need to go to work on all of them, and in that, we agree. And I will say that the day when we had the little snow, as far as, as far as being receptive and hearing you, I got a couple of calls, and with apologies, I didn't, when I ask are all my centers open, and I hear yes, I just assume that means yes. I found out that day from some calls from you guys, that the school site was not open. And I think about two hours later, I had my guy over there de-icing the center so that it could open the next day. So that's probably not that bad a turn. And I will say that the school site center is the only center that we did anything to to try to make it ready to get customers back. By and large, we count on God and Mother Nature to take care of that process. In seventeen years, there's probably been less than ten days of interruption of service due to weather. And I think the good folks that pay my landfill fee would not want me investing in quarter or half million dollar worth of equipment to service these centers and then rust down because they were needed four times in seventeen years. So we sort of let, we sort of let nature, we sort of let neighbors that have contacts with DOT, or know somebody with a scraper, we kind of, we kind of muddle through to get there.
But if you asphalt that one and blow the schoolhouse, but if all did good railing and all there, you wouldn't have to work that way and have somebody clean the dog. Would that not be cheaper in the long run?
Well-
I mean, low gravel's four hundred dollars.
I mean, absolutely would be cheaper, but because it's cheaper in the long run, doesn't mean that I have capital dollars versus I have operational dollars. I mean, that's just a, that's a fact of level government law. I may have two thousand dollars to spend on gravel this year at that center, I don't have thirty thousand dollars to, or fifty thousand dollars-
Who'll allocate your dollar to?
The gentleman to your right.
Jim, we're in Nantahale and need some asphalt. I mean, if you guys come over with them fancy glasses, it'd be awful muddy today.
We don't own either of those sites.
So we don't own, the county don't own neither one of those places. Well, don't you think the county ought to come up, I mean, get on the planning board, get somebody over to find some land? I mean, is it up to the, if the, we pay you guys for that, do we not?
Yeah.
Help us out, we just need to be helped out.
Can I make one comment? Before we get into this thing too much, there's a real bad safety issue with that coming out of that exit on that lane. You cannot come out of it without crossing the yellow line and getting on the other lane. I think that I would be looked at to where you can come out of there and not have to go cross that yellow line. I've nearly got run over two or three times.
Eric Ingersoll's side. You know, these centers were put in in the seventies when we stopped doing green boxes and started maintaining because we had to control what was going into landfills. And, you know, I don't know, I don't know how they came up with it, I don't know what kind of process went into it. I think it was, where's a quarter acre land that we can nest on for free or cheap? And, you know, as the population has grown, we have, we have not kept up. And there's, there's no doubt you're right. There needs to be a reckoning at many of our centers, and that is something that the manager and I have talked about in, in some of his, as he's trying to develop some capital improvement planning instead of reacting. And, you know, hopefully, hopefully you'll see the fruits of it. Hopefully I'll see the fruits of it.
Mr. Jacobs, we hear you loud and clear, as part of our meeting tonight on the new business, we're going to be scheduling a budget review, we're going to be starting our budget kickoff for next year, so we'll definitely take it under advisement. We can't work something into our budget moving up into next year.
The community building too?
Trying to be adaptive for that.
Yeah, community building's going to be on the capital improvement plan, walking trails around the ball field, and that's the thing, and dump station are the three things that I think everybody's concerned about. Library, community, we'll be discussing the broadband issue for it, initially we were looking for profit, had to have some more, get that high-speed internet or whatever, but now we're, I'm talking more to Kate, why not just put up a dish and buy a piece of property somewhere and do the community building and the library together? So, but it will be in the capital improvement plan, absolutely, I guarantee you that. We're supposed to have that for next month.
We'll be discussing that at our budget kickoff, that we'll be discussing later on the agenda, that'll be the first time it's introduced to the board. Like Commissioner Higginson said, that's a, that plan is an opportunity for us to look at the capital needs for the next ten years in this county, and prioritize those needs in a way that will allow us to accomplish them best while not going broke doing so, just to how we can get these projects, space them over time, and also, we're going to be discussing ways to fund them as well. So all these will get put in the hopper, they'll go through the discussion process with the Board of Commissioners, and we'll have a plan come out of that.
And Nantahale has gotten, we all talked about this, Nantahale's been kind of a great stepchild for what you said there earlier. I wish some of you guys, we do need to represent it on the planning board or some of these committees from Nantahale. Absolutely. I'd like to see where you got it on the planning board, I'd like to see them open skating out on it, but you seem like you can't bust through it right in the long run.
Well, I just want to be able to tell the people that I'm around it, they say, "How you're wasting your breath?" And I don't, I don't have to say that anymore. I want to feel like that y'all care about what's going on over there.
Now, the landfill is a, is a separate, it's a separate child. It's got its own, what do you call it, a re-? Enterprise fund.
It's an enterprise system. The money that's paid on your property to fund the landfill, that's a separate account from our general fund that we manage here. That's a separate enterprise fund. Everything that's handled through solid waste goes through that enterprise fund which Chris manages. So any improvements that are made to that, to those centers or anything in the landfill, comes out of the money that y'all pay every month, or every year, ninety-six dollars a year for your landfill fees. That's where that money goes. And you guys have been getting, showing emphasis stick on that. I think it's absolutely imperative we get the gravel over there, get you out of mud to start with while we're talking about it. I mean, that's pretty simple to make, but with this freezing thaw, it's going to be a nightmare.
Probably is.
So I think it's imperative that somehow we come up with enough money to get, see loads of gravel down there, just right now.
And I, and I, you know, I budget for that. It's probably a little earlier than we like to put it down, because if we put it down in January, it's gone by March. So, you know, again, we just kind of, we kind of suffer and muddle through so that when we do put it down, it's at least there, there's some decisions that you haven't made.
Well, I talk to different people, and they come through Carson Community and South John Dr. on the twenty-eighth, they'll say, "Well, why can't we have that in Nantahale?"
You don't want Carson over there. Carson's not there.
But it is, it gets you shoes moved.
It is paid. It's a different-
I'm going to leave a song, we've got a lot-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jennifer Hayes? Welcome, Jennifer.
Evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I would also like to address those cycling centers, go for a different approach. I spoke at the town council meeting to raise awareness, so here's my, my recommendations. Every major holiday afterwards when they're closed, because everyone deserves a chance to spend holidays with their families, our citizens, our fellow citizens, they get upon themselves to load their trash at the locked gates, and that's littering. And there's, there's supposed to be something done about that besides the fact that our solid waste managers and our solid waste attendants have to muddle through that. There's, you know, feces, bacteria, needles, you don't know what people have. And this time of year, everything is frozen to the ground, and the animals are scattered it all over the place. On twenty-eighth, there's two vantage points for this trash to make its way into the river, so that's also something that we're looking at conserving. I brought it up, the mayor even said that he has seen it, and my father has worked for the solid waste for fourteen years, and it happens every single year. And I speak for myself, not for him. And I've posted it on Making Issues, it's a Facebook page. A lot of dear citizens feel the same way that I feel, that something needs to be done. There's hundreds of bags of trash just left there. For my sister and my father, used a trailer to move it off of the locked gate at one point, they couldn't even get in there. And it's on us, it's our community that's doing it to each other. But where do we enforce it? How do we, are there cameras? Are we violating somebody's privacy for not putting up cameras, or for putting up cameras? People were saying, "Let's put, you know, a lone dumpster out front." Well, then, what's the point of having a gate?
Chris, thoughts? I hate people that leave stuff at the gate. I hate it with a passion. We have looked, and we actually have, well, we deployed one for an alternate purpose, but we've gotten a couple of cameras that we haven't deployed at the centers yet. As a trial run, these cameras are very expensive. The problem we have is, is not just having a camera and capturing somebody. How do you power this camera? How do you get a feed from this camera to somewhere? As y'all may or may not know, we were broken into up in Highlands, it's a transfer station a couple months ago, and the people were savvy enough to steal the DVR and, and cause some kind of virus to our, to the SD cards. So, you know, there's just, there's just so much cameras can do, and just, again, I go back to just kind of being a, trying to be a steward, trying to balance, you know, the camera, the best solution I've found so far of this camera that I've tried, a hundred and seven thousand bucks a piece. Why should I spend a hundred thousand dollars because some, I don't want to say assholes, but-
Irresponsible.
Irresponsible citizens, you know, why do we, why do I need to spend the good people's money because irresponsible citizens do this kind of thing?
There's some, I'm asking.
Yeah, there are signs out that say, "Don't do this." Well, I mean, I think everybody knows it's littering. I will share a, I will share a funny anecdote. Several years ago, I made a request of the Sheriff's Department during holidays, if they had people that weren't on a call, if they could kind of hang out near the centers. On Thanksgiving of whatever year that was, about three o'clock, I got a call from Sheriff Robert Holland at my dinner table. And Sheriff Holland relayed to me, you remember? "I'm tired of being cussed, I'm going home."
Because I was working and you were home eating.
I mean, we have, we had, we had Mark, Mark Hayes, my name is, he was out trying to pick litter, pick this stuff up, and there were people pulling in and throwing bags out on the ground as they were loading them in.
Every single person that day that I stopped and made them put the garbage back in their vehicle were people that do not live in Macon County. They stayed here overnight, or they were here visiting, they were leaving the county and on their way out, they had to take the trash out of the rental cabin or wherever they were.
Yes, sir, that was brought up in that Facebook page about, what do we do about visitors? And it's simple, just enforce what's going on.
It's a misdemeanor, they won't extradite that, but if you're lying, there's got to be-
And, I mean, that's kind of one of our, one of our hurdles, I mean, this is why we're open on Sunday, is the- Sunday, is because of the weekenders.
And the lack of their logistics is not our fault or our problem.
I think, I mean, I think it's a burden to somehow be borne by the renters of these properties. But, we don't have, you know, there's, there's nothing in our ordinance at this time that would require a rental home to have, to offer their customers dispose. They generally just leave a note on where the center is at. And centers opened or closed, doesn't so much matter if you're on your way back.
So, the solution is, is to, just like most problems, we basically throw money at it and stay open on those holidays?
Well, I mean, first of all, the county recognizes, 11, 12?
Twelve holidays.
Twelve holidays. The only two that we officially recognize are Thanksgiving Day and Christmas Day. Now, there are two others, New Year's and the Fourth of July, which sometimes don't fall on a Monday or Friday. If those two don't fall on a Monday or Friday, we will close. If it's on a Monday or Friday, it's just, it's just too difficult to keep the, keep the situation up and running. So, we're closed either two days a year or four days a year max. Now, the first was a Monday, we were set to be open, but with the ice and the county being, county offices being closed, I just decided, let's just, holiday, we'll just leave it at that and be closed that day. That's, you know, that's a fairly unique, unique situation, had it not been for the weather, we would have been open. But, that ignores the real problem of the fact that people just don't care, people will just throw, I mean, that's like, you know, why don't we do more with litter? Well, I, you know, I can, we can write all the laws, we can triple the sheriff's staff, I didn't say that out loud, we can do whatever we want to. If somebody wants to chump something out to win, they're going to chump something out to win. Paul, I think you said earlier, you can't regulate morality. If somebody doesn't mind cracking up their neighborhood, man, what are we going to do?
Is it planned? Is it piled up? Is that the center closed?
Anytime the center is closed, you can see it happen.
Not necessarily on the pile.
I mean, holidays-
You play the holidays ball.
That's just the only days we're ever closed.
So, you're like, holidays are simple feds. On a holiday, you just sit it down, trap it out.
Can you?
They have qualifications for OSHA standards to, for distribution of how they handle and dispose of the materials that come in. So, you can't just throw refrigerated holes into the same pan, or into the same dumpster.
I mean, our, our, our centers are staffed and manned and our attendants are trained because there are a number of items that can't go with those things.
So, you don't have to pile that up.
Except in Nantahale through, it seems like that. I know that's a severe step.
We think of lesser evils, but it's all a monetary value of the lesser evil, because to me, the greater evil is the fact that the attendants still have to do extra going through there and sorting it out when their purpose and their job is to stand there and make sure things are being sorted properly. So, on four days, we're going to penalize them for doing their job and you got your day off. That's not fair. I think that if there's a convenience store that's closed and I go up to it and I think it should be open, I can't just barge in there. And you said it's the face of the county. If you spray paint on somebody's business wall, that's defacing public property, and I feel that's exactly the same thing that we're doing at our centers. You're defacing them. And everyone goes through there, everyone says them, the mayor says of himself, he sees it every year.
All right, thank you, Jennifer.
Yes, sir.
I will say, those folks who cleaned it up too, did that.
Yes. Jennifer, I will say one other thing, and I told you guys, this is about six months ago. In my time here, we've had three needle sticks, two of those were from trash left at the gate overnight.
Scared, scared, scared.
So, the next big solution is make clean?
No problem.
I'm also discussing the same thing as Jen. I actually have volunteered several times, my dad is my case, and I have volunteered several times to help him pick up all this trash. And it's not just a pile of it, it's like 80 to 150 bags of trash. And we don't have any solutions. Everyone's asked us, "Where are you coming with? What are you going to propose?" I don't have anything to propose. I'm only proposing awareness. I mean, I wanted to bring it to you guys and maybe you guys have ideas or you have things that maybe you can put in place or enforcement somehow. Does the solid waste, do they have an officer dedicated to, to that program?
We have an enforcement officer, he is not a sworn officer.
So, what does he do?
With, in general or with regards to these centers?
Both.
Well, in general, we take them to do that.
Okay. So, in regards to these centers, because this is the enforcement-
If he happens by one, like, over the, over the holiday, every time he's coming to town, he pulls in, he stops, he runs people off, he gets cussed, and he goes down the road. He'll usually, he'll usually encourage people to pick up everything, not just theirs. Some of you may know, our, our enforcement is not, is not really developed towards littering. That's, that's a-
This just happens to be a byproduct of the issue.
That's a, yeah, that's a law enforcement issue. Ours is geared, ours is geared more towards illegal dumping.
This is illegal dumping.
But our rules, our rules are built towards like illegal landfill dumping. For instance, if I, if I were to try to cite you, you have 15 days to correct. Well, I got to get that stuff moved by 7 o'clock, so it's not going to be there 15 days from now. So, that's just not how our enforcement is developed.
Okay, well, I really don't have much more to say on it because Jennifer kind of covered it all. I mean, we discussed it, all this is all, like she said, you can see it making issues. I personally was a little ignorant of the fact that it was such a huge issue until I started helping my dad.
And if it's any consolation, the other counties fight the same thing.
I don't, it isn't, I don't live in those counties. I'm sorry. This is, this is our county, and we take pride in our county, and all these issues everyone talked about tonight is our county. And I am very passionate about it, I have learned about it, and maybe the big word tonight was education. Maybe if we put out some more notices or if we, especially on the weekends, run some ads in the paper about where you can take your trash and to be sure that these times are closed on these days. I did, I did hear something about how there's not enough notice for closure, like people, they don't know that it is or that it's supposed to be open and it isn't, or they leave 15 minutes early, things such as that. So, maybe we can get the word out to the public a little bit better than how we are.
Good point.
I just want to thank you guys for all you do. I know you guys work hard, it was, well, I needed in here, so, thank you.
We've got a long night to go.
Thank you for having us.
I know.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
One less.
Good job, girls.
All right, we're going to move on to adjustments to approval of the agenda. Any changes, Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If we could add an item to old business, it'd be item number 10C, be a resolution exempting the surveying services for the South Macon expansion. If we could also add another item under old business, be item number 10D, extension of the lease agreement on the current burned building property.
Sweet, what else? Any motion to approve the agenda? Okay. Motion second on the favor?
Aye.
Reports and presentations finally. Audit presentation for Mr. Mayor of 2007. Thank you, Matt. Welcome, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Enjoy small town politics.
This is not the first one, not, it won't be the last one. It's, I completely understand, and I've been doing this for 10 years, so, it's, it's nothing new to me. Well, now, I appreciate you letting me take a little bit of time, I'll try to be short on it, I know you've got a lot of stuff going on, but I'll just kind of go over, go over mainly your general fund, then we'll touch base on your, your landfill fund, your enterprise fund there, and just kind of give you a snapshot in time, 6:30, 17, what's your fund balance and what's your, you know, what kind of happened throughout the year and where you came in, fund balance, general fund revenue, expenditures wise, there. So, let's start here. Okay, I'll just use it up here, I'm sorry. All right. Okay, all right, unmodified opinion, that means that we issued a clean opinion, which means your financial statements are materially correct in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. And so, a clean opinion or unmodified opinion is the best you can receive for your audit report, for your financials. Very cooperative staff, Lori Hall, she takes tremendous pride and time in, in making sure that your audit is completed in a timely fashion and able to, to give us everything that we need. Very, very responsive in emails, phone calls, field work and everything like that, so she, she was very appreciated this year and I just, anybody that worked within the county DSS, from finance to payroll, everyone was very easy to work with, and especially I want to thank Lori Hall as well.
Thank you.
Right, next slide, total fund balance in your general fund. You can see the comparatives for the three years here, so you had a gradual increase from 15, 16 to 17. So, in total, your general fund fund balance went to about 26 million and 200,000 there, up to about 770,000 from 16 to 17. And this is after all other financing sources, revenues and expenses, and so overall, total general fund fund balance increased about 700,000. And then, just to kind of give you a little bit of definition here on fund balance, which I'm sure that you heard this or seen this, excuse me. Your fund balance serves as your financial resources available as a measure, and so, to calculate that, you have your assets plus your deferred outflows, which is different deferred pension-related type of items, various, various other deferred outflows, it'd be like deferred charges on refund and different things like that. Minus your liabilities, which is things that you owe, your deferred inflows of resources, this would be, for example, your property tax receivables, different things like that, comes up with your fund balances, everything that is left over there, or your assets plus deferred outflows, minus your liabilities, minus your deferred inflows, equals your fund balance. And the different classifications, just to kind of touch base on that, you have non-spendable, which is not in cash form, which is your inventory and your prepates, and then you have restricted, which is outside external restrictions or third parties such as like USDA, different things like that, different strings attached to that. Then your committed, that is internal constraints by you, the board, that you put on various dollars, and so, then assigned is the lowest level of commitment. It is less than committed. And then unassigned is everything that's left over, and so you had unassigned fund balances of about 21.8 million in your general fund. Available fund balance, this is what the local government commission will look at when they look at your financial statements, when they review your financial statements, it gives them kind of, what are your resources on hand? And so, your available fund balance is calculated as your total fund balance, less your non-spendable, which is inventory prepates, less your stabilization by statute, which is accounts receivable, money that you have not received in yet that is not available for appropriation. You have to take that out and comes up with your available fund balance. And then this is your available fund balance calculation in your general fund. You can see your total fund balance came in at 26.2, less your non-spendable and stabilization by statute, comes up with your available fund balance of 22.3 million there. So, you had an increase of about $300,000 in your available fund balance. So, a small increase there from 2016. And then this, available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers out, this shows how much reserves you have on hand, and so, you had a small decrease there of about 4% and you had an increase in available fund balance but a decrease in your available percentage. And the reason is that, is that your expenditures that are divided into that available fund balance increased more than what your available fund balance went up. So, overall, you had a small decrease in your available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, but you did have an increase in available fund balance. So, that's kind of how that was, you had an increase there but a small decrease here. So, and just to kind of put that in perspective, your expenditures and transfers out for 2017 was $50 million and in 2016 it was 45.3. So, that'll kind of show you why the small decrease there. But what we'd like to show here and explain is that 8% is roughly one month expenditures on hand or supply reserves, so you have about five and a half months of supply on hand there. So, that is, that is overall, that's good. So, that means you could operate the government on basically just fund balance for five and a half months. And then, general fund summary here, this will show you comparative of 2016 to 2017. You can see that you had increases in revenues and expenditures in 2017, revenues went up about 4%, expenditures went up about 5%. And the main increases in your revenues were property tax increased slightly, sales tax was up quite substantially, so that is good, we've seen that across the state as well, and then your strictly governmental, which is your federal and your state grants, increased as well. Then expenditures went up about 5% and the largest functions there was general government and public safety. We'll go into a little more detail in the next slide. This is kind of just to show a breakdown of your top three revenue sources. So, top three revenues comprise about 90% of your total revenues in the general fund, ad loan taxes, which is going to be your large one for, for any municipality or local government or county of that. And then your strictly governmental came in at 19%, ad loan taxes 56%, and sales tax accounted for 15%. So, overall, that's your top three revenue sources and, and this is very, very comparable to the prior year as well.
This information that you're providing for us right now, do we have a copy of this?
I can email it to you tomorrow.
Okay, it's good information and I'm flipping here through this book.
Yes, sir.
And I don't think it's in here.
No, it is in there, but it's not like at this point.
Right, I can understand.
We're just going big picture here. One thing in your, in your audit report there that I was going to say at the end is that if you, it's, it's a fairly large document, if you don't have time to go through the entire document, I would look at the management discussion and analysis, which is prepared by management, that kind of goes over all the highlights, increases, decreases, and even gives you some 2018, that's the compliance letters. So, it would actually be, in the other book, the other book, it'll be almost right after that.
The financial one.
Yes, you're almost there. It's right before that. It's right before that. No, 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 you're right there.
You're at it, right here.
Now, go back a few pages. It'll go right after that. Right there's, this one right here.
Right here. Starts on page 12.
Management discussion analysis, it'll give you causes for increases, decreases, it's kind of the big picture, how things happen, what caused it, and kind of doesn't go into, because the financial statements are overall, they're getting more and more complex and harder to read because of all the Gadsby statements and pronouncements and all that stuff. But the management discussion analysis, that pretty much gives you the nitty-gritty, the skinny that I, that I like to say on, you know, what happened for the year. Top three revenue sources, ad loan taxes increased to about 28.3 or slight increase of 1%, so overall, fairly comparable there. Restricting governmental, this is your federal and your state grants, had an increase of about 9% or $840,000 and just an increase in your, in your federal grants that you got for the year. And these fluctuate from year to year, so next year it may be a small increase, it's just kind of timing differences there. And you did have a few new grants this year that kind of caused some of that increase, but overall, it's going to fluctuate some from year to year. Came in about 9.8 million. Local option sales tax came in at close to 7.5, had an increase there of about $600,000 or 9%, so overall, that is very good.
This is sleeping in?
6:30, 17. This is a snapshot in time of the annual financial statements.
So, we're still lacking everything from July on?
This is a full 12 months. This is July-
July to July, 16 to 17.
16 to 17.
For the entire, yes.
It's a fiscal year.
Fiscal year. Yes, sir. Top three expenditures, public safety, human services and education accounted for roughly 73% of your total expenditures there. Total, top three was about 33.2 million. So, total expenditures came in at roughly 45 million. But overall, we just kind of want to show you what your largest expenditure functions are and like the revenues, these are very, very comparable to the prior year as well. Public safety expenditures, we had an increase of about $1 million or $10- percent. Uh, main cause increases, increases for that, um, was the jail had an increase in, uh, housing, different various expenditures there, inmate population increased, and then EMS also had, uh, an increase there in expenditures. So, that accounted for, uh, majority of the public safety expenditure increase there, the jail and EMS. Human services, and this kind of correlates with your restricted governmental, so you can see an increase here as well. So, it's timing of the grant since it's, um, um, you know, federal and state, uh, driven here, so human, human service expenditures is such DSS, um, your health department, various things like that. So, you had an increase there of about three percent or three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to eleven point eight million. Education expenditures, uh, roughly very, very comparable to the prior year, came in at close to eight point six million, slight decrease here, and main cause for that is less timber receipts in the current year that has passed through the school system as well.
Less what type of receipts?
Timber, timber receipts, yes, sir. Uh, decrease of about ninety-nine thousand dollars from the prior year in timber receipts. And then, just to touch base on your enterprise fund here, your solid waste, um, you can see your comparatives of the twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, um, decrease in cash there is for the landfill expansion project, that large capital, uh, construction in progress that you had in twenty seventeen. So, that was the main decrease in why the cash decreased there. Um, overall, had positive gains in your net income on budgetary basis and GAAP basis, um, there, cash flow from operations, uh, over nine hundred thousand dollars. And then, your unrestricted net position, that is, uh, basically your available fund balance, if you want to kind of compare it to your general fund there, so, uh, that is positive as well, almost close to two million dollars there in your solid waste fund.
You have the last you probably could.
But that's, uh, that's kind of a snapshot in time, overall, general fund, general fund had positive, uh, increases there, solid waste, um, so overall, uh, a very good year, and thanks to Lori again.
Alright, thanks, man.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, man. I am from Hick Creek, or the, our office, Martin's, our association's offices in Hick Creek, I actually live in one of those.
That's okay.
But that's where I'm from.
Yes, sir.
Lived there my entire life. Thank you, man.
And what high schools you go to?
I went to West Caldwell.
West High School?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Three A?
Two A, two A.
Now, did you speak three A?
Uh, when I was there, it was two A. Um, uh, I actually went to the Highbryne football game when Franklin played in there, I was actually playing for Franklin. We won't say that.
They won, they changed it?
They did, they did. That's, uh, that's the, West Caldwell's big rival, and so, I always pull against them. My wife went to Highbryne, so there's that's a big thing there.
Is that close to Alexander Central?
About thirty minutes.
So, you're gonna email this out?
Yeah, I'll email.
That'd be good for our work session.
And if you have any other questions, anything like that, and, uh, Lori needs to contact me, or you need to contact us, uh, feel free to do so, um, you know, we'll do whatever, discuss anything that we need to.
Main thing is, Matt, what you said earlier, we appreciate what Martin's heard, that we have an excellent financial report.
You do, you do, you do. And, and the thing is, uh, they take pride in it. A lot of, a lot of people think that financial statements and, and, you know, the, you know, the state statutes that you have to follow and all that stuff is, is, is not necessarily important, but me as an archer and people, citizens, that is a big deal. Um, and so, uh, it, it's always nice to go into a place that, that takes pride in there, just like I take pride in my work.
We're blessed.
Very good, very good.
I'll ask a favor of you. Remember that, you know, be surprising for this year, you see that automatic increase every year.
And, uh, I wasn't gonna, and, and I, and I, I was not gonna bring that up tonight, but, uh, since, um, since you did, unfortunately, there's gonna be some changes in, in that. And we can thank Beth Wood, the state auditor, and different things like that, there's some, um, the single audit is changing again. Um, so, we, we'll discuss this if we need to, however we need to. Um, the direct benefit, the direct benefit payments are coming off of your schedule and federal state awards. So, what that means to you is that the major programs that we have to test is going to grow substantially. So, it's gonna go from, if you look in your compliance reports, we tested three or four programs, next year, it's gonna be seven or maybe eight.
Maybe now.
Yes, so, that, you know, more programs and more time. And, uh, so, that's something, we're, we're still kind of in the, trying to see how much extra time this is really gonna take. So, uh, that's something to keep on your radar as well. And then, you also will have, uh, an AUP more than likely, but the state auditor, since the direct benefit payments are coming off of the CIFA, um, that means Medicaid and WIC and, uh, programs like that are not going to be major programs. But for the state auditor, they're going to still select those and make us test whatever they want to test. And they are going to set that as a separate engagement. So, well, there's still a lot of unknown, so I don't want to speculate too much on if it's going to, so, uh, just keep that on your radar.
We're good people, and we're obviously four, so keep that in mind.
I will, I will definitely relay it, and, uh, I like working with good people, so, uh, we will, I will do my best, what I can do.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, man, be careful.
Thank you.
Be careful.
Alright, I'm at the Cowie School, Art and Heritage Center. We're calling, we appreciate your attention here, gentlemen, appreciate your patience with us.
Miss Hall, gentlemen, thank y'all for giving me a little spot on the agenda. I can't believe everybody left before the exciting update. They don't want me. Y'all have a packed agenda, I'll be very brief tonight. We had a great year down at the school, and we certainly appreciate, uh, the county continuing the support down there. I'm just gonna hit the high spots here. Uh, this year, our user visits, that's everybody that comes to the door that we can count, is up two thousand from last year. Just a few, uh, we're up from seven thousand to nine thousand. Can't count the people that come to the facility on weekends for baseball and football.
What's your summer?
These numbers are concerning.
Did summer, the summer eclipse, did it do England?
Uh, we had six hundred, roughly six hundred more people at the festival this year, which was the Saturday before the, uh, eclipse. And a lot of those people were, they were expiring, they were in, they came to the festival. That's what wound us up there. Uh, we received or will be getting, uh, a large grant from the Cherokee Preservation Foundation to do a lot of stuff at the, at the school there. They're gonna be, uh, designing our own exhibit in particular to the Cowie Mount Town area instead of the one that we have now that travels around the country, it's very general. This will be very specific, uh, and they've granted us money for the development and the construction of that, so we will be adding funds on that. The community foundation in western North Carolina, we've caught their attention, they set aside money for training for nonprofit, uh, organizations, usually much larger than we are. They're quite interested in the fact that we have a business incubator at spec, uh, to our nonprofit, and so, they're giving us seven thousand five hundred dollars to do training. And, and we need that, I will tell you, I knew nothing about, uh, operating a nonprofit organization when I came to this building. Uh, and so, we're gonna get some good training that will hopefully help us as we go forward. Again, in the interest of time, y'all have, everybody might copy this. We had a little water system blit down there, we had a bad, uh, a bad water test down there, let me commend Steve Ledford and the, uh, his folks, they jumped right on it. And, and within five days, we had a new system board installed, and we've passed, uh, multiple county and state tests, everything is good, uh, at the school down there. Uh, we really expanded our fourth grader visits, uh, we like to give them North Carolina Cherokee history there, because that's in the fourth grade curriculum there, so we're trying to expand that to every fourth grade class in the county and on the tribal property. Uh, let's see, we've got two new tenants this year, one was the Cherokee Moon, uh, that we're in, and that's, uh, the finished product of that room next year is really gonna be something to see. Uh, and Down Memory Lane Toy Museum took up one of the spots that the, uh, that the museum gave up one of their rooms down there. And I'm happy to report that we incubated and graduated our first business, uh, this year, Happy Go Lucky Foods, a young lady started out, uh, in her own kitchen at home and needed more space, and she rented from the school, and she's now building her own commercial kitchen, where she lives in Jackson County, and she's hired two employees. Uh, so, that's, we're very proud of that, uh, we hope that we can continue that. Uh, we've got a nice booth out at the Chamber of Commerce, I hope y'all had a chance to go out there and check that out. Uh, one addition we're gonna have next year is Eastern Band of the Cherokee Department of Environment and Natural Resources is currently advertising for a full-time position to put inmate in county, uh, to oversee and be a liaison with county and town government, uh, with the school, and to oversee the projects that are gonna take place at the Hall Farm property, uh, where I believe, I'm safe in saying, they're gonna put in a Raptor aviary and rescue soon, is their current, uh, project there, that'll be open to the public and, and become a destination. Uh, eagle restoration and aviary is very important to them culturally and spiritually in, in Cherokee, uh, so, so they think this property is great for that, and of course, there's the development that's gonna take place at the Yellow Danes Auto Building in town, that person's gonna be housed at the Cowie School, and they'll be paying rent on their office space there. But they've given us money to upgrade the office room, place down there, so we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be out of it for that. I think you'll see we have a great list of partners there that we interact with, and, and I can't come here without praising Stacy Guffey, uh, whose experience is in grant writing and communicating with, and knowing how to operate with this wide variety of partners and granting interviews here, we couldn't, we couldn't go there without, uh, his experience and knowledge and all this is, uh, is vast. And so, I really send his praises here. I do have a few, uh, the third page there is, uh, is our income and expense statement by month. Let me go ahead and address April, uh, 'cause somebody's gonna see that too soon now, we've got a lot of money going out there. This year, we added the new outdoor stage, that was almost seven thousand dollars. This was not a grant, we got the money upfront and then spent it, we had to build the stage with our funds, then turning our receipts to the Blue Ridge, uh, National Heritage Area, and they reimbursed us for that construction. So, a lot of that money going out in April, if you'll look it up, comes back to us in October, when we finally get the money there. April's also a time when we're buying advertising for upcoming concert series too, so we have, that's the time of year we have a lot of money. Now, uh, we improved over the year, we did a lot of things at the school, and we, uh, we ended up with about four thousand dollars, uh, above our balance from last year, which is our safety net. When things come along like the, uh, the outdoor stage construction, we would have some money, of course, for matching grants and opportunities that come up like this. Questions, anybody?
If you have something to add on the back.
Well, it has been, it has been a good year. Uh, I have a couple of requests to make, I'd like to ask for another meeting, as we do our strategic plan, and, and you gentlemen, going to the budget talk, Mr. Bill is our liaison and one of the other board members, uh, of last year, uh, to have another brief meeting with you as soon as we, as soon as we formulate a strategic plan, to meet with you and see how that fits with the, with the county.
Now, one thing, Bobby, before you sit down, uh, we've talked about, you know, the handicap ramp. And we've already seen letters concerning that handicap ramp, and, uh, where does that stand, what's the latest on that handicap, you said to take?
The latest on the handicap ramp, uh, handicap ramp that I've heard is I know that Jack and Steve went out there and measured, and have looked at what they're gonna need to meet the building code. It's my understanding that that project is about to get into the works after.
With money in that budget is better.
After they had went and measured that, I think we were able to find the money, um, in the, the building improvements budget.
That's, it's, it's very important to us, because when we go after federal grants, anymore, when you apply for those, a facility like ours, they send someone out to inspect for ADA compliance now. And so, before we go after those bits of money out there, it's the right thing to do. The, the ramp that there is there now is, is usually starting to fall apart, and, uh, we've shared with, it would not pass after that. Let's see, that's, well, I've asked for the meeting, uh, see if we can.
We'll do that in March, Bobby.
That'd be fine.
March, you.
Yeah, 'cause we'll, we'll do our strategic plan again this month.
'Cause we'll start ours with Saturday night.
Plus, we hope to have this training that the, uh, that the group is, uh, is gonna give us to help us train.
But y'all have regular meeting now, Bobby, you know.
We meet on the, uh, fourth, no, I'm sorry, third Monday morning of each month, seven AM at Sunset Restaurant.
Think you can make that an evening meeting?
Yes, we can.
So, play on the third Monday of March?
Yes.
And then, in the evening?
In the evening, seven o'clock. And the other thing that I have to ask for here is approval by the board for the other half of our funding for this fiscal year. Uh, we originally talked about forty thousand, uh, for the entire year, and we're gonna forego, uh, we're just gonna ask for the money that covers, uh, our halftime administration position there. So, that would be thirty-six thousand instead of forty, so I would be asking for the other half, or eighteen thousand of that to be approved for the next six months. Not tonight, at your discretion, but to ask that that be done in a timely fashion.
So, we need money in the budget to pay.
I looked at the budget today, because I saw this update on here, we only funded eighteen thousand, we're contracted, so it's gone, 'cause that covered July through December. There's money in the, we're still paying the electricity bills and the gas bills out there, it looks like there's enough money in that line to carry them through the end of the fiscal year. And then, they had a little bit in the maintenance line, which I guess is what you're talking about, maybe they can buy material, I don't remember how much it was, but.
Yeah.
That was pretty much the only three line items that they had money in this year.
So, you need a budget amendment to, to carry it?
They would need eighteen thousand, like you're saying, if they're gonna, if they're gonna continue their contracted services.
And you plan on continuing that, Bobby?
We do, we do.
And we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand in contingency, we have spent zero year to date.
So, do we need to go ahead and approve that board, or?
Call and get a liaison.
Well, I would, I would recommend that, uh, 'cause we had that discussion when we started, that we'd come back at this, and we can't wait, hard to wait till March, it's ten more months, so, for Lori. So, I might the most that we approve, uh, the eighteen thousand, uh, to carry them on through the, this fiscal year.
From contingency.
Any further discussion?
Call and favor.
Uh, I propose. Thank you very much. Again, let me thank y'all for, for your support out there, and know that everybody involved, all of the great board members, we have great board members out there, and we're all headed in the same direction. And I will tell you that that's the first board of commission out there who served on this, that was like that.
Bobby, you'll be in touch about the third Monday of March, if I remember, or whoever.
Third Monday of March, and if anything's different, um, about the, the handicap ramp?
Right.
I'll get in touch with you.
Okay.
Regardless, I'll get in touch with you and give you an update on where we stand as far as getting started.
Probably would do that in, in early, late spring.
The cycle on that for us will be made, so there's plenty of time. But of course, before our first major event, which would be, we'll start having the concerts out there.
And we like to pitch it in Washington too, so, and that's in, that's in, for two of March, so, we'll, we need, we need to at least have, I think we have the plans in order and have everything, say we're gonna do it, so we can pitch it a little bit better too.
Okay. Thank each of you for your service to your community here, this is not an easy job.
Thank you, Bobby.
Bobby, don't spend your money on training on parking attendance, because you got two eighty-year-old women that I might hire as deputies.
They're good, they're good. Oh, yeah. There are no, there are no bones about parking.
Thank you, Bobby.
Alright, two and a half hours in, and, uh, the whole business is pretty good job. Alright, I'll hold, just tell you, go get your, get your mat or something, just slip out, let that in, and pull a few trucks and keep it smooth. All right, my end of the whole business discussion, regarding the abandoned tire recycling from US Tire, where you got that time, I gotta go.
Good time, real bathroom.
Good time, real bathroom. Grab one then.
Gentlemen, in a nutshell, you had authorized, after taking a request for proposal, uh, Chris made a recommendation for US Tire to, to be awarded, I think they were the only showing talent, if I'm not mistaken, uh, the RFP called for a one-year contract with two one-year renewal options. When the contract came from US Tire, it was a five-year contract with. When the contract came from US Tire, it was a five-year contract with two one-year renewal options. And we had a discussion with him and basically said, you know, that's not getting put out in the proposal. And they said, well, that's what we bid on and that's what we priced it based on. If you want it, you know, for a shorter period of time, it's gonna cost you more. Spoke with Chris about it, spoke with county manager about it, and Chris has actually found some advantages of going with a five-year contract under the current regulatory circumstances. Is that correct?
Yes.
And as a consequence, he's recommending that you go forward with the five-year contract to your renewal options.
Any questions to the board?
These are all the other terms that were previously approved by the board of the site. It's just the time.
My last thing. Nothing caught my mind. We got a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the five-year and two-one-year renewal options.
Renewal options.
Renewal options. Make that motion.
Yes, sir. Check. All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, consideration of memorandum of understanding with Macon County Board of Education regarding Southmacon Elementary School expansion. Mr. President.
In a nutshell, what you have here, the school board has the right to, under general statute, to select the architect for work on its buildings or any other project in that matter. However, as you know, the way we have to handle school projects, we've been doing the construction for them. We found that to be advantageous, advantageous to Canada as well as the school board. And so there's a little bit of conflict there. If we're going to be hiring the architect, we have to approve that architect as well. In this particular situation, what we did is we did work of the liaison, this board with the school board, as well as the county manager. The architect was evaluated by both the school board as well as this county. And this is a memorandum of understanding, basically stating that the parties worked together on this project together and that the school board is in fact happy with and accept of the architect that the county has approved. That enables us to move forward in contract negotiations with the architect that has been selected as the most qualified firm.
We got a motion to approve the memorandum?
As liaison, which she was expecting, we did have a liaison committee meeting with the schools and this was the main topic of discussion. And this is the same architect firm that had done the rest of the school with the last two new schools. And they've done a good job, what we think is reasonable price. And so, which she was expecting, we both agreed with the school board that this would be-- that they're very hard enters in what we're doing and that it seems to be professional. And so we-- the liaison committee approves of the resolution and the--
Motion.
And that's the motion.
One second. Memorandum of understanding. Should we get-- we got other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, resolution exempting surveying services.
This is a situation involving the Southmacon School, a part and parcel of the architectural work, as well as the actual work that's involved. There's some surveying that's gonna be required for this project. As we are required to put out architectural services and engineering services, that same statutes as you're supposed to put out surveying services as well under a request for proposal unless you exempt that matter. And the statute specifically provides for projects where the cost is gonna be under $50,000 for may and writing exempt that particular project. This case is gonna be $6,500 or less. Is that not correct?
Well, yes. And to speak to that, we did have a liaison committee meeting, as Mr. Beal had mentioned. The surveying services that are being requested and we have to have for our architect prior to starting construction on this project, it's a fairly detailed survey, which includes locating all utilities above and below grade with elevations, along with pipe size and material, existing trees, size and type, site improvements, survey point data, et cetera. Essentially, what this $6,500 was at first was there was some discussion prior to our liaison committee meeting and us getting back together with the representatives from the school board that this project, aside from encompassing an expansion of the school itself and the work on the cafeteria, as we have discussed and looked at in RFP, they were also going to make some improvements to the front of the property, to the main entrance off of Addington Bridge Road. There's wetlands up here. It was-- they started looking into it. This was-- this area that they were going to require the same surveying services for is the same size as the area that would be required to be surveyed for expansion. So in discussions with the architect, the architect said, you know, this is gonna be a very significant expenditure added on to this project if you move forward. We discussed it again at the liaison committee meeting and felt like that we could do without it and still accomplish what we're trying to accomplish with this renovation project. So I say all that to say, the scope at the time that this proposal was submitted for $6,500 was two times the size that it is now. So it will be substantially less than $6,500.
The exception is to obviate the need to go through a request for qualification. I missed earlier, it's not proposal for qualification. Request for qualification is to avoid the expense associated with that on a small project.
We got a motion to approve the resolution. So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, extension of lease agreement.
The county presidency has a lease agreement with the Community College SEC for the burn building. That lease is due to expire at the end of this month. Of course, we are in the process of discussing the building of a new burn building, perhaps a new location. But until that's done, this existing burn building needs to be available or used by SEC. I would propose to this board sort of an extension, if you will, to extend this, the current lease an additional five years with the additional stipulation that during that five-year period, either party may cancel the same upon thirty-day notice to the other. So in other words, if we get this built in two years, we're gonna end that lease.
Sounds good.
And in that regard, we need to authorize county manager to enter into that lease with the Community College. And it may be that the North Carolina Department of Administration has to be party to that as well. I think they may have to approve this.
We got a motion to approve the extension of lease agreement.
But did we do this? But did we do this last board meeting?
No, I just brought it to your attention.
We raised the issue about something that needed to be done. The five year, okay. I'll make the motion that's the five year. And we felt like that was a timeframe there that we could adapt-- That should cover us for the construction period and then some with the understanding that either party may end it on thirty-day notice to the other.
Eric Anderson, the area voice.
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Finally, new business. Item A, distribution of proposed amendments. The Animal Control Ordinance. Mr. Rock, welcome, Jim. Thanks for your patience.
We set this out for you with your board packet, but I wanted to have a copy. I'm here just tonight to present and for board approval, changes to the Animal Control ordinance. As I said, they were sent to you in your packet for this meeting, but if you didn't get to look at that, you have now a hard copy. The changes that we've made to this are mostly cosmetic changes around definitions and clarification of some of the original language from questions that we get from consumers now that we've had Animal Control for two years at the Health Department. We've got a lot of questions about the ordinance and we're trying to clarify some of that. Our intent is not to change the original intent of the ordinance or anything that was contained in the ordinance. We have vetted this through the county attorney and Jimmy Villiard and I in Animal Control made the changes. We took it to the Board of Health back in September and on a motion by Dr. Todd, who's the veterinarian on the Board of Health, they unanimously approved or validated all of the changes that you have in hand right now. So basically, we're requesting a review and consideration by this board and hopefully approval at your next meeting. The document that you have in front of you. If you have any questions, you know, you all know my phone number and my email. I'd be happy to answer any between now and then in hopes that we can get--
I don't think a public hearing would be required here. However, I would want to remind this board, especially those that were here at the time that Animal Control was moved to the Health Department. We did some amendments to the ordinance and they were sort of a Band-Aid approach at that moment to get Animal Control under the Health Department. At the time we did that, both Mr. Rock and myself pointed out to this board that we would be coming back to you for some additional amendments that we could see needed to be made. As you will recall, that decision to move to the Health Department came rather quick and need to be done very quickly so that we wouldn't have elapsed in Animal Control in Macon County. They have since worked. He and Jimmy Villiard have worked diligently and kind of come up with those things that he and I had discussed needed to be changed. And they have involved me in that process and I have reviewed their work. Although it's not required to have a public hearing, it's kind of going back to where we started. I think there was a person here tonight who helped out. They were here for this purpose. They're not here now, but they were here for the purposes of inflection on this, or you may be right. The only observation I would make is these changes were not designed to be, wasn't the material changes to the ordinance. It was more of terminology to get it more correct in the operating environment of the Health Department, technical types of changes, if you will. And that's the reason I encouraged the Health Director to bring the ordinance to you tonight, the red line strikeout version. Let's take a look at it. And, you know, if you come back next month and say, now, there's material changes in here as well that we want the public to weigh in on, then you might ask for a public hearing. But on changing the name of, for example, an animal control officer or a-- what is the lead?
The lead animal.
Yeah, there's some things like that in there that we're dealing with and I'm not sure the public's gonna be terribly interested.
There is some traditional--
There's no question they're happy. But I think you're gonna find that the most of it is the advertising.
Which of that more makes sense, though? I think it's the advertising.
You need to advertise and there can be--
You might think the improvements you've made here is really good to the-- I mean, I think you clarified a lot of the things, like the dangerous dog.
I mean, we've asked them all over the lot, so to speak, so-- There's been a lot of work that they did with you.
I think the changes it's made, it's made it more readable and--
And we're going back for informational purposes in many of those instances. We saw them back to statutory language rather than having county drafts--
And having a bag. Yes. I mean, I read it pretty good, so it's-- the changes I seen is all-- it's mostly just defining what was there, making it more simpler and making it a who's responsibility is whose. And so I think you all did a good job with it.
Well, is your dangerous dog board--
No, there's a different-- there's a separate ordinance about the dangerous dog board. Like the dangerous dog component in that, it wasn't exactly the same language in that as in the general statute. And it made it challenging to explain dangerous dogs to people. It's much easier to pull the general statute out.
Well, you got into the vicious animal thing. The dangerous dog, the vicious animal, and all down the line, so.
Well, and the biggest-- I think the biggest thing in there is probably animal cruelty. Because when-- since we've taken over Animal Control, we've done a lot of things around investigating what animal cruelty officers do and how they're appointed. After John Hook left and we reappointed Justin Chester Alatac and we reviewed the general statutes around animal cruelty, that's probably the biggest change in there, is we took everything in there about animal cruelty out, except for the one sentence in there that allows-- the way the general statute is written, is any citizen can make an animal cruelty complaint to the magistrate. It doesn't have to be an appointed individual by the county.
Believe it or not, the animal cruelty officer can't be--
Can't be an employee of the county. And it has to be an independent person paid separately by the county for their services. Where in reading the general statute, any individual in the county can file an animal cruelty complaint. However, we have three animal control officers and the attendant of animal control who all can, as employees of the county, not be appointed an animal cruelty officer, but can investigate animal cruelty complaints and carry them all the way through the entire legal process, just like an animal cruelty officer can, without appointing them. So we've taken all that language out of there, except for the fact that any animal control officer can file an animal cruelty complaint.
I think the attempt was to deliver this ordinance, give you a chance to read it.
Read it. And if you were inclined to act on it, bring it back up to the next meeting to discuss it further or to act on it.
I'd like to see the calls. I'd like to see-- I wish I could ask, so I have to pass. So for that to happen then, would that--
We'd need one public hearing.
I'd say as soon as possible.
At the February meeting? I was afraid we'd have time to review this or we all like that other stuff, all a bunch of stuff go out there that is not true.
I mean-- Well, I think probably what we may wanna do is we may wanna go ahead and see if we can get this posted to the internet, to the county's website. And in the notice of public hearing, we'll notify the public if they wanna read it, be available there. Those two people came in tonight, especially lady. She was expecting something to be handed to her, her state, make some copies of this. And I'm not sure it satisfied anything, but they were here for--
For that reason.
For that reason.
Does that need to be in the motion?
The board does need to approve the calling of a public hearing at February regular meeting. And I'll prepare if necessary.
I think that's a motion. If there's something else, you'll refer to it.
I'll second the call.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Good. Thanks, Jim. Subsection of security enforcement.
Yes. There are housing programs, as y'all are probably familiar with here in Macon County, where one is the CDVG Scattered Side Housing Program. And I think what we do there is we help assist people bring their housing up to standard. In this particular case, an individual by the name of Mary Estelle Brad-- In this particular case, a, an individual by the name of Mary Estelle Bradley had borrowed some money, and under the terms of that program, the note to the trust is to be canceled after a certain period of time if there had been compliance with John Fay. Mr. Fay advises that the conditions for loan forgiveness have come to pass, and it's time to cancel this security agreement. I prepared a written satisfaction, a security instrument, and emailed the same to you. Just need a motion to approve that document if you're inclined to do so.
Just approve the info.
Motion to approve.
Second.
If we could get Mr. Tate and Mr. Rowland to sign that tonight, there's a closing that's counting on this document.
Second by Shields. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass that down. Come on, y'all. Sign away.
You want it.
Specially for mid-year, call Park City County Manager.
Yes, right now, you know, it's coming up mid-year. We usually have our budget kickoff around the first of February. Last year, we had it around the same time. This is, will be, of course, where the budget calendar is distributed to the Board of Commissioners. We have a mid-year review, kind of where we are this year in terms of the projects we're working on and fulfilling the obligations that have been placed upon us by the current year budget, as well as giving the board an opportunity to look into next fiscal year and begin setting our, our goals for the forthcoming fiscal year. This will also entail the presentation of, for the first time, to you, the rough draft of the capital improvement plan. I'll say it's a rough draft because it will not be a final draft till, till this board has many discussions regarding projects, prioritization, and gets all the questions you have answered before moving forward. So that will be the purpose of the meeting, and right now, I, I am thinking a proposed date that we have at this time would be February the 2nd, which is the last Friday, or the first Friday in February, at, like we did last year, that would be on a Friday, have it at 11:30. We would serve lunch here from 11:30 to 12:00, and then meet from 12:35.
What day again?
February 2nd, Groundhog Day.
Will we have the CIP at that time or will we have it prior to that time?
Yes, you'll, you'll have the CIP at that time, as well as we'll have somebody, again, from Davenport here to go over that CIP with us. So we'll, we'll be covering a lot in that meeting. 11:30, yes.
11:30.
If that, if that would be acceptable to the board.
In the boardroom Friday?
Yes, in this boardroom.
That will be, um, the, the, the Thursday and Friday morning, Green Berth. General, go ahead and have it. You know, want to do it, make sure the speaker be, go ahead and have it.
What are the dates? You said you're out Thursday and Friday?
The next day, February 9th.
31st.
Well, this is all about the.
February 9th would be, we were looking at the first week in February, that's kind of the deadline that we've given our consultants working on the, the CIP, and we've kind of checked their availability, and I think Laura and I were thinking that if we could do it the first of February, that would give us just a little more time to get everything we need prepared.
Do you know that besides that same week, besides Friday?
Yeah, we could do it.
I was saying the 31st is one of the.
We could do it.
Tuesday the 6th. Are there 31 days in this February?
31 in January.
Then, oh.
Jim will say January 31st, which is that Wednesday.
Which, the 31st.
Well, that will be the first, it'll be the, Friday is the second, so we can, Laura, we can double check with, do you think we could go ahead and set that and then just tell them what they gotta do?
Oh, not this fall, maybe.
You want to do it?
The second Tuesday, maybe that week. Paul, we're back then.
About what?
The night.
Take it to the Samuel College, no more.
So is it 9th?
Where we at here this 9th or 2nd?
The 9th.
If he's not gonna be here, here on the 9th, then why not the 2nd?
I think.
Are you good with the 9th, Mr. Shields?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the 9th, but Paul's not gonna be on the 9th, why not the 2nd?
He's not gonna be here on the 2nd.
Paul, you missed me.
It don't hurt.
You missed me.
Paul can do the 2nd. He can do the 9th.
All put in the form of an ordinance, so it all is standing.
All right, February 9th.
11:30.
I think the 13th is the regular.
You'll send us a reminder?
Oh, yeah.
Send it to his hotel room.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda, unless there's something, one of the board members, the lights are full out, or look for a motion to approve. Motion approved?
What's the call we, we're on the 9th.
The 2nd. I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, wait a minute, if you have something about the town of Franklin for Janet Green as the Town Franklin Panda Board, ETJ representative.
Question for yourself.
Motion, second. All in favor?
This is, this is a caveat out there, you'll know if you read that close, that's just a one-year appointment. It's usually three-year appointments, but that's, it's just a one-year appointment that Janet requested, so you see to keep that in mind.
I think there is a need for a close session. Chester, you expecting any action?
Do not. This will be the purpose of preserving the affirmative time privilege and with the.
All right, so we will come out of close session in five minutes and.
In recess.
In recess. Until February 9th.
Where is it?
8th and 3rd.
Here.
Here.
Motion to go into close session.
Still moving.
Motion by Bill, second by Gilchrist. All in favor?
Aye.
Here you go.